It's November 1st, 2022. I want to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Board of Finance. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we rise while our colleague, Mr. Testani, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. To the members of the public who've dialed in or joined us on the WebEx, please know that you are muted and will not be heard by board members. Typically, we invite live public comment during the meetings when there are voting items on the agenda. This evening, there are no voting items other than minutes, and consequently, there will be no live public comment. As always, members of the public are encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at the following email, bof@fairfieldct.org. If you do so, please remember to include your name and address as you would with live comment. Tonight's agenda includes two substantive items. First, we have a presentation from the Tax Assessor to update the board on the Senior and Disabled Tax Relief Program. For the benefit of the public, that program, which provides a variety of options for qualifying senior and disabled residents to reduce their property taxes, was last modified in 2021 and has now been in effect for two years of applications. The purpose of the presentation is for this board to hear how the program is performing with respect to participation levels and cost. Second, we have a discussion regarding the budget process that will be led by the Chair of the Budget Committee, Mr. DeWitt, and we'll provide a bit more background information when we get to that item. With that, I'll move to Item 3 to hear and discuss the Assessor's Report on Tax Relief for the Elderly and Disabled Homeowners Program. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. The backup materials for this item are online on pages 1 to 3 of the posted backup. Ross Murray, the Tax Assessor for the town, is here via WebEx to present this item. Welcome, Ross. I believe you're muted. And frozen. Can you hear us, Mr. Murray?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
The audio is a little weak on your side, that's all.
Okay, so I'll turn this over to you to walk us through this presentation.
Okay, you have a copy of the report that was provided to the RTM back in June, and it summarizes the applications that were received this past spring. I won't read through the whole report, but I'll hit the highlights. We had a drop in the cost of 584,000 or 14% from last year, and that's primarily due to the decline in the number of participants, which decreased from 1,315 people last year to 1,0137 this year. So we had 241 people fall off the program, net loss. We continue not to have anybody select the Freeze Program, and the deferral is also not an option that we've seen anybody take, and we are down two people on that from four last year to two this year. Both of those were failures to reapply. So the credit program is by far the best choice and financially the best choice for So I'll open up the questions. That's pretty much the highlights.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members? Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Ms. Charleston. Can you hear me? Mr. Murray, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I have the report, so thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Having had a lot of time on Senior and Disabled Tax Relief with my colleagues, Mr. Walsh and Ms. Marmian, the reduction in overall participants sounds like a lot, but when you look at the details here, and I quote, "We removed 241 accounts this year primarily due to those that are deceased or moved." So we've got attrition. I mean, Senior and Disabled Tax Relief, we're going to have attrition by death and moving, right? I'm heartened, though, to hear that there were 489 replications and 65 new applications, which I think is positive, right? 65 new applications in a year is pretty high. Correct, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
So there were a lot of things that happened. There was a, I know in my tax bill, I got a little piece of paper that said, hey, if you're a senior, sign up for tax relief, and it's mentioned here that, you know, not only in the tax bill was there a reminder, but the Senior Center, the Fairfield Senior Center does a wonderful job of propagating this and bringing people into the Senior Center. So I know it looks like we reduced the budget, we reduced spending from 4.1 to 3.5, and we've had some decrease in overall participants, but, you know, I don't want to focus on that. I want to focus on the fact that we do have 65 new people coming into the program. I still think it's a robust program and I think still has a lot of merit, so I just wanted to highlight that because that was not in the, you know, the overview. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions? Mr. Walsh.
My follow-up comment to Mr. DeWitt. I think in the current economy that's been going on for the last several years in this town and the way values of real estate have skyrocketed, you'd almost be hard-pressed to not blame any senior from moving out of town after you've just had a run of 30% to 40% in your real estate values in the last couple of years. So if you planned on getting out or you tried to maximize the value for your children, there's a hard sit-down that you have to do and say, Mom or Dad, maybe it's just time to sell and we'll get you a better place or we'll get you down to a warmer environment. So I've seen it happen. I live in the beach area. I've seen it happen all over the place. People I thought would never move, some great people that I got to know over the years who've gone elderly, and they're like, Jim, how could I not sell? Because I don't even have to pay a real estate commission. People who live down there, Capes, whatever, you get five letters a week for people who want to buy your house, who are telling you, buy it as-is, I don't need to see it, and you do not have to pay me a real estate commission, so you save another 5% on top of it. So I think a lot of that has happened. I don't know what's going to happen if a recession comes along, where the builders are going to be, whether they're not, but there's just been a lot of people who have moved for various reasons, but many of them, who I've talked to, have told me that the values just got too high. I got to sell because I can just get so much more moving someplace else. So I would back up some of the comments by our colleague, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Curley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this presentation and information. I do agree that of the 241 that were removed, if 155 have passed away or moved, there's nothing we can do about that, but I'm curious about the 86 that didn't move or didn't pass away. You know, that's still a net reduction. We had 65 new applications, but 86 that did not reapply for either of those other reasons. So do you have any insight as to those 86?
I'm sorry, you referenced 86?
Yeah, so in the last bullet on your synopsis, you talk about 241 accounts were removed, 155 of which were the result of either passing away or moving, which would leave 80, 155 due to deceased or moved, which would leave 86 that are not, that were not in the program for those reasons. So I didn't know if you had any insight into that.
Yeah, on the report that's included, there's a breakdown a little bit with much more detail, so I'll hit some of those. We had 27 people were denied the program because they simply didn't qualify, mostly due to income. We had 15 people that had excess assets because there is an asset limit of 650,000, and then 42 people just failed to reapply. And we do send out letters and follow-up letters to everyone, so unfortunately, we don't know why they don't come in, but they, we had quite a few this year that just didn't reapply.
Thank you. And do you have any demographics on the 65 new applicants? Are they new to Fairfield or do you have any information on that?
Demographics on what group? I'm sorry?
The middle bullet where you talk about 65 new applications. I imagine those are new to the program. I didn't know if they were new to Fairfield or if they were just aging in or if you had any demographics or details on them.
I don't have anything on that. I don't have a breakdown on that level of detail.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Other questions? Ms. Marmian.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the synopsis. We had some debate this time last year over whether or not we should kind of reconvene the committee, and the board voted to kind of put this on hold, see where the changes, where the fallout was in terms of the results, and I think the issue with that really is that COVID, the past couple of years, I don't know, I feel like it was an anomaly to Mr. Walsh's point that so many people moved, housing values went up so much. I'm still not honestly clear in terms of where some of the changes we had proposed to the ordinance will fall out in terms of how this is benefiting people. That's my overall comment, but my other, I have a question. Do you have, can you break down for us seniors versus people with disabilities? I know that Mr. Curley asked about demographics of who applied, but can you break that down for us a little bit more in terms of what happened to that specific population?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a little hard to understand you, and you wanted to break down further of what group?
People with disabilities.
And what sort of breakdown would you want on them?
I think she's asking for seniors versus people living with disabilities.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's also contained in the report. So we have a total of 21 people that are disabled that are on the program because of that and not because of age, so that group of 21 is under 65, and they're able to qualify for the program.
So, thank you, and I do see that, but I'm wondering, how does this trend differently from past years and applications and people who qualified?
Well, the applications, I'm just looking at a summary over the years, it is down. It's up a bit from last year. We had 57 applicants last year, this year 65, but in past years, you know, it's been over 100 typically. Say, let's just scanning it, I'd say probably an average of 130. So the new applications are down.
And again, do you attribute, have you heard commentary or have people talked to you about why that may be? Is it, again, COVID or people moving out of town? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I really don't know why it's down. You know, certainly COVID could be a factor, but we have plenty of people coming in to reapply, so that doesn't, you know, COVID doesn't seem to be stopping people from coming in to reapply, so I wouldn't think it would stop them to come in the first time. You know, I do think a lot of people have, you know, sold their houses and taken advantage of the market and moved, so that, you know, it could be that that population has diminished a bit.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Curley, you raised a really good question, and I am. The mic's on. I'm seeing a green light. Is the mic not on? Closer, it's going to be in my mouth. Can you hear me now? Okay. I will make it, I know. You might need to replace the mic cover at the end of the night. Ms. Curley, you raised a good question about those 42, and what I was surprised about from sitting on the committee and working with Ross was all the efforts that they do make to try to find people, because those 42 people, no one knows what happens, but in in-depth conversations with Ross, you know, people get put into nursing homes by their families, but nobody notices, you know, nobody notifies anybody about that. Correct, Ross? There's like all sorts of reasons.
That's absolutely correct. There's a lot of people that will move in with family or go into a nursing home, and it could be that children move into the home or grandchildren move into the home, and we just don't know that, you know, they don't contact us and tell us.
Yeah, but I will compliment you on the various ways that you try to find people, from going down to the Senior Center, from doing all your mailers. I mean, we were trying to possibly assist with other ideas, and we almost couldn't because Ross had been so exhaustive with all the different ways that he tries to find people and let people know that the program's available and to try to get more people to participate in it. So I do want to commend you, Ross, on that because we really couldn't help you with any further ways to find people.
I'm sorry?
I was just complimenting you, Ross. I was just complimenting you, so don't worry about it. We're all good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Matola?
So this is to the committee members and you also, Mr. Ross. So when we've done this program over the years, when we've had it in place, how many years would we let it run before we started looking at it again? I don't really recall. Is it three, four, five years? Mr. DeWitt, do you recall?
If I recall correctly, when we looked at it, it was eight years? It was a long time. Yeah, it was a long time.
For a while, the RTM thought it was theirs, so they were looking at it every year.
Right.
And then it came out that pursuant to state statute, we had to start the process, and if we decided not to start the process and do it every year, then it never started, and they never got to them. So that's, it was being looked at every year for about 15 years.
Yeah, you know, so, yeah, let me clarify, just to be clear.
Oh, no, it was being changed. Yeah, there's a tendency, I found personally, that if you have to look at it every year, everybody wants to do something better, so, and that became part of the problem. I think we talked about that at this board a little bit, is without seeing what the change, how the change affected the town on taxes or how it affected whether people participated or not more, we would just, the next year, meet, they would start, the RTM would meet and form a committee again, and they would give recommendations at the end of the year, which normally went up every year. And that's probably one of the ways why we had the best, if not close to the best. I think we do have the most generous Senior Tax Relief Program in the state of Connecticut.
But, so, just to clarify what I said, if I may. Substantive changes was, you know, was our committee, and that was, you know, really looking at how, and it was, it was started by the RTM, and at the time, the CFO was concerned about where that change might go, reached out to some of us on the Board of Finance and said, can you guys take a look at this? And that's when we found out that state statute said it was actually ours to change, and that's when we convened our committee. For almost a year, we convened this committee, so, yeah.
Are you set, Mr.? Okay, thank you. Mr. Curley?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess this is more a general question. I'm not sure if it's best answered by you, Mr. Murray, or Chris, or the board, but in general terms, does the town have, like, I'm curious about what the goal is in terms of participation. Is it a dollar amount? Is it a number of households? Like, I'm looking at these numbers which are down versus where we thought they would be, and yes, we can't control a lot of these variables, and we certainly applaud the efforts to try and get participation, but I guess I'm thinking about what the overall goals are here. Is it a certain dollar amount that we're looking to give for relief? Is it a certain number of households? And I'd be curious to get some insight there.
Thank you. That's a great question. Please, Mr. DeWitt?
So Ms. Marmian was nice enough to bring my presentation from the last time. We've never had goals around a dollar figure because the dollar figure kind of falls out, right? This current budget season we're in right now, it's $4.1 million, so even though it looks like the spending is going to be less than that. Our goals were to maximize the number of seniors that can take advantage of Senior and Disabled Tax Relief. As Mr. Walsh said, Mr. Murray and his, between Mr. Murray's department and the Senior Center, they've done a great job of putting this out to the community. Short of us knocking on every door and saying, hey, you know, you want to get some Senior and Disabled Tax Relief? Our goal was just to increase it. We also, our committee also had a very specific goal to maximize the benefits of the lowest-income seniors in town. So I won't go back through my charts because, you know, this isn't the purpose of tonight, but the people that were making the absolute lowest amount of income, we boosted them up a higher percentage than we did, you know. The range, you know, you can make up to $75,300 in income and still be eligible, right? We have a significant amount of households that are in the $0 to $18,000 income range. So what we wanted to do, so for example, we gave up to 75%, which is the maximum we, you know, you have to pay 25% of your taxes. So 75% is the absolute maximum we could, we gave that upper group that 75%, and there's a sliding scale. So those are really the two goals I think are the most, well, and then the other one, more of a Board of Finance thing, to keep the, to keep the Senior and Disabled Taxpayer investment growth to an acceptable level. So if we came to you and said, hey, we think it should be $8 million, I think some of us on the board would rightfully say, hmm, that's, even $4 million, you know, we've never broached, increased over $4 million. We've creeped up pretty close. This is the first time last year we went over $4 million. So those were our goals, you know, maximize the number, make sure we give the most benefits to lowest income and try to keep the spending in check.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Walsh, did you want to add to that? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr., what, did you have a different question, Mr. Stark? Okay, can I, can we let Mr. Walsh also respond to this one?
Just to follow up with Mr. DeWitt, I think early on, the three of us on our committee, you know, came down to, you know, what are we trying to do? To me, it was, well, if we're trying to give a benefit to keep people here, Mr. Murray quickly explained how much some people were making and how could they possibly stay here? So it became for us that the lowest-income people should receive the most benefit, and he correctly stated that you have to pay 25% of your taxes under Connecticut state statute. We can't get around that. Like, you know, we just can't get around it under state statute. So that became a driving force, which we've never done before, where we did this scale. And we, you know, as your income went up, you hit different levels, and Mr. Murray was great in, every time we'd have him rerun the numbers to see what approximately that would, you know, cost, he was great about it, even though we were adding dollars to this still with what we were doing. So we were trying to do, I mean, I know I was trying to do maximize the people who needed it the most, but, you know, I didn't want to triple the number of dollars and all of a sudden have the administration and the Board of Finance, you know, sitting here like, well, now we got to pay for this, and this is like an unfunded mandate almost. So it was a tricky thing. We worked a lot on it. Mr. Murray was great with running models for us, but that's the way we went. We were hoping we'd have more participation, but it is what it is every year. We'd have no idea what people are doing, let alone what the housing market has done to the numbers as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Curley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh and Mr. DeWitt. That's very helpful. And I do recall that you took us through that presentation earlier in the year, and I thought it was very helpful. I actually kind of looked at what you had put together, Chris, as kind of the template in a sense, was kind of the quasi-budget as to what to expect in terms of income stratification and home assessment value. And on page 2 of the backup from Mr. Murray, we have a lot of this data for the actual results, and what I don't see here is how this actual result stratification compares to what we thought it would be when you had put that presentation together earlier in the year. And I think that would be insightful for us as a board to understand where, not just where the $500,000 came from, bottom line, but where, was it the lowest income bracket that missed, or was it the higher income bracket that missed? It's that type of comparison that I think is effectively the quasi-budget to actuals, and that's what I'd like to see, so.
Well...
Go ahead.
Take it over your meat. I don't mean, I don't need to do that. So it's a really good question, right? So of the 1,139 households, and I'm looking at Mr. Ross's data, there are no households in the upper range. Oh, sorry, that's because he's got, so 259 households are making up to 79,500, right? He's taken it up one notch. We had predicted 296, right? And these are, let me tell you, these are not our numbers, these are Ross's numbers, right? But I'm looking at Mr. Ross's numbers. It's on the lower right-hand corner of the second page. See that little box that says income up to? And you can see there's a pretty good distribution there of 119 houses that have, you know, incomes below $19,000. And even though you're seeing quite a few houses at the bottom at 259 at that upper range, you know, there's a lot, you know, there's, if I'm doing math in public, which is never good, but, you know, more than half of the numbers look like they make, the households make less than $50,000 a year. So to see that upper part of that chart with numbers kind of trending where we thought, 119, 121 from the predictions here, at 70%, I mean, I think that, I think that says that we're helping those, those upper, those upper ranges, right?
Does that answer your question, Mr. Curley? Okay. Mr. Stark, you had a question before.
In the budget, I see that we allocated $4,077,768 for the town share of tax relief, and this question might be for Mr. DeWitt. I'm not really sure. Whoever wants to answer it can. So it looks like we're coming in 509,590 lower than that, so that's surplus? And then the state share was 367,000. Does that stay fixed or is that pro-rate lower?
Mr. Murray would definitely be better than that. I think it's fixed, but...
The state numbers?
Yeah. It's not prorated off our numbers, right?
They have not changed their, they have not changed their benefit levels in years, so it changes with the number of applicants and how they qualify, but it's, you know, it's pretty much steady.
So, yeah, then the surplus is more than 509,000. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Mr. DeWitt?
Just my final comment. I, what I guess I really want to say about this, in, you know, I speak with a lot of passion about it, not only because we spent a lot of time on it, but I mean, I truly do believe that this is a good program, right? And I just wanted to be known that I think any reductions we're seeing are not because of the merits of the program. I think it's just, it's natural attrition, right? It's the financial aspects that Mr. Walsh brought up, it's the fact that we were talking about our most senior community, but I still think it's a good program, and I still think the core values that we instilled in the program and how we allocated the money is still, was still done well, so, and I'm...
Thank you for that.
I would just like to tell the board, I also think that it's going to take a while to figure out, like, five years. It's not going to be done after one year. I think really to see, like, I think we're seeing... I think really to see, like, I think we're seeing some anomalies because of the real estate values. But I think to really see what we did and whether it was a good program or not, or whether it can be tweaked or not, are probably in at least minimum three years, probably five years. And that's, I would estimate that that's when we should be looking at it, to see how the work we did. Because one year could just be an anomaly based on the economy. You could have a year where more people than not go into nursing homes or get taken in by their family. I mean, it's just, looking at one thing, I think is kind of looking at it in the vacuum and trying to make predictions on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other comments from board members, questions for Mr. Murray? No?
I'll go.
Mr. Curly?
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that comment, Mr. Walsh. I do agree that one year does not make a trend, but it's, I think it's on the record that when we discussed this topic earlier in the year, I was supportive of reopening it and revisiting it. To me, this is a pretty big shortfall in relief in terms of dollars versus our plan. And I agree that we shouldn't jump to any conclusions, but I would hate to see us go another year and then this number come in at three or two and a half. And we didn't take a.
I guarantee that.
I guess my point is I'm still open to revisiting this in terms of potentially getting the ball started. As was discussed, the RTM needs to wait until we act before they can act. And if they want to do some homework and come up with some things for us to consider and form that joint committee, I would be supportive of that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Anyone else have comments on that? And to be clear, I think what you're, I think what you're suggesting is that this board, so what we did last year and this board, the committee's charge is to take a deeper dive into this data and recommend whether there should be a joint committee formed. Not automatically that there should be a joint committee formed, but maybe just vet these numbers a little further. We are, I appreciate everyone's comments, but we're speculating a little bit. You know, we may have more deceased people because of COVID. We don't know. There could be other anomalies in here or other factors driving these numbers that we don't, that we don't understand. So I think the purpose of the subcommittee for the Board of Finance was to perhaps take a deeper dive so that everyone could be comfortable and then they would make a recommendation as to whether or not to form that joint committee. So I'm not sure what you're suggesting, but I just want to clarify.
Thank you for the clarification. That is what I was suggesting. I'm not suggesting that we change the program. I'm not suggesting that we start the subcommittee. What I am suggesting is that this was a relatively brief presentation and sometimes it's good to look at the tangible data a little bit more closely and that's all I'm suggesting.
Okay. Mr. Walsh?
And the other thing, I think that I've seen some of the RTM presentations and I've seen them get lost in this fact, in that we budget a certain amount of money and we base it on that. And then, you know, I've heard people say, oh, there was $300,000 left. It was a failure because $300,000 didn't get deployed to seniors for relief. No, that's the, like, the number, that's the most amount of money because otherwise we're over budget on it, okay? So it's, the number we're setting is, should be the highest amount and then we should hopefully expect that it be short of that or, you know, hopefully it's $5 short, but it should be, I want it to be short because otherwise we have a shortfall and we haven't budgeted properly. And then we have to look at other reasons on why that happened. How could that possibly happen? So it's just something to keep in mind. I have no problem with what Mr. Curly wants to do, but I do think that, you know, it's, you know, and Ross can attest to this, I mean, it's a hard number to hit, you know, it's just like, you know, because you just, there's various reasons why people don't apply, apply, income levels change, all sorts of things happen. It's like a lot of moving things at the same, moving target at the same time and we're trying to like nail it down. And I don't think it's, yeah, if we miss by a million and a half dollars or $2 million, something's wrong and we got to look at that. But I think a lot of it this year, I still think it was real estate based. I honestly do. But, you know, I have no problem drilling down on the numbers a little bit more and working with Mr. Murray on that. Maybe he can provide some advice, but.
Okay, well, why don't I, I'm going to make a suggestion then and maybe, and then maybe we can close this out. If there are members of the board who are interested in raising their hands to be on a subcommittee, we did in fact dissolve the subcommittee after the vote was taken earlier this year. So if there are members that are interested in serving on a subcommittee for the purpose of taking a deeper dive into these numbers and understanding them and making a recommendation to this board about whether or not we should form a joint committee, let me know. We can then let the board know at the next meeting and then we can move forth. And those, those members, and I hope there's three of you that will raise your hands. I want to thank those.
I don't like you keep looking over here.
I keep looking at Mr. Dewitt because, well, yeah. So why don't we, why don't we do that? So if anyone would like to serve on the committee, I think we should probably have three individuals and I, you know, I think it would be a good thing to do. I recall that last time, it didn't take a long time. The committee was ready to report back to the board, so happy to do that if that's okay with everyone. All right? Terrific. Okay, so if there are any other comments on this item? Okay, all right. So with that, we will move on to item four, to discuss with town and Board of Education officials, the Board of Finance Subcommittee Options for Improving the Effectiveness of the Budget Process. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Curly, seconded by Mr. Dewitt. So there are no backup materials for this item. Before I turn this over to Mr. Dewitt, I'd like to thank him for his leadership on the Budget Committee over many years. I'd also like to thank him for offering to lead this discussion among our board members, management of both the town and Fairfield Public Schools, and representatives from the Board of Education. And I thank you all for being here. We look forward to hearing feedback on our historical budget process and everyone's thoughts on how we might collectively make it more effective. So with that, I will turn the chair over to you, Mr. Dewitt.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So in a typical budget meeting, which is, you know, budget committee meeting, which is usually two or three people, in a budget year, I ask three questions. What went well? What didn't go well? And what should we improve? So because we have new members and because, and I'd like to include the, our Board of Education friends here and Ms. Laborius from Central Office to maybe come up and take some microphones and involve you in the conversation because you are certainly, you know, a large part of the budget process. Oh, I'm sorry, in our CFO, I apologize, Mr. Schmidt, please. So my thought for this evening, if you, if you haven't seen, and I sent something today, so it was really late, so I apologize. I thought I would expand what a normal budget meeting would be and just go through different aspects of the, of the budget process. What's our pre-meeting, you know, what, do we get pre-meetings? Our materials, you know, the book, the structure of the meetings, the physical meetings and voting, just to, you know, to, you know, a couple of topics. So I'll introduce a topic, ask for comments, and then I'll ask three questions. What went well? What didn't go well? And, you know, what do you think we should improve? The goal here is to come up with an executable ask, right? So for example, if someone says, I want the budget book to be blue. I don't like it when it's pink. I don't like it when it's purple. I want it to be blue. I'm going to say, I'm going to write down, I'm going to tell Frank the budget book has to be blue. It's, there's an executable ask. If we say things like, budget meetings are too long, great, we all think they're too long, but how do we improve it? So what's an ask? What can we put in place in the process or what can we, you know? So think about that. Discuss whatever you'd like to discuss about the budget process, but think about at the end of the day, what's our ask of either our two friends that are at the middle table here or of the Board of Education or of any of us in our budget process? So we can start with pre-meeting information and I've, and what I mean by that is, you know, our first select person's address and anything we get before the meetings, you know, the book, any handouts. So does anybody have any comments about what went well?
I have a comment. I happen to really like asking questions, going through the budget book, asking questions, getting responses from the town, from the Board of Ed. It's very helpful so that we don't repeat ourselves, so that we have the information to look at and analyze before an actual budget hearing. So I like that part of the process.
The physical asking, delivering questions beforehand?
Yes, I mean, we're asked to ask questions, put them in writing and ask for clarification and rationale, et cetera. And I find that very helpful because it gives us an opportunity to study these responses before we go into a budget hearing where we need to ask for that information. So the town or the Board of Ed is prepared with those answers. It's very helpful.
Great. And we can, I had done this years ago and I think it's probably time to do it again, is to kind of put together a process sheet. It's nothing official, but kind of how we handle our budget process, you know? For example, we've never put a cap on our meeting time, unlike the RTM meeting if you have to vote when it turns 11 o'clock, whatever. We decided we never wanted to do that. Maybe that's, you know, so, okay, so questions? Okay, very good. Sir?
Just to offer, for the past several years, we have used on the Board of Ed a Google Sheet on which the board members can, before our budget meetings and kind of during our budget process, ask questions. We get responses from the administration officials on that sheet and that sometimes frames how we want to raise the discussion. Sometimes it eliminates the question. It's a simple yes or no or a piece of information. Sometimes it helps us to frame how we want to have the discussion in the budget meetings and it, and it also lets us know what everyone else is asking, which is in itself useful. So I don't know whether that would be helpful or if that's the kind of information that you're looking for, but.
So you have a shared sheet with the, with the administration?
Yes.
And said, you know, I want to know why we're doing this or what's the process? And everybody knows, so you don't re-ask the question and you can get, you can get answers that way?
Correct. And, you know, and it's, you know, obviously, you know, we get a schedule, you know, please have your questions in before Monday so that we have time to answer them. And sometimes we get them, we have gotten them at a printed form at the table, but that's also something that the public can access, which I think is also, is also helpful.
Please.
I think that's great. A Google Doc is a great idea. It's like a living document, which I think is really great. I guess I would add to that, maybe it's worth, because we get so many emails from the public, they ask questions, et cetera, it might be worthwhile to accumulate some of those commonly asked questions with, just so that we have them. I mean, there's not necessarily a response, but we know what those questions are or concerns to tabulate those.
The last budget season, our chairman, chairwoman, sorry, asked every, asked the public to ask questions ahead of time and then when they were relevant, we spent the first couple of minutes of the budget meeting answering those questions. So I thought that was a, actually a good process, too.
Mr. Dewitt, can I add in on that?
Yes, please.
I think that the Google Sheet would be good for certain things, things that may not have a lot of detailed backup. I could see maybe an issue with that with, with some items that we submit that have detailed backup. I could think of one email alone that had maybe about seven attachments. And so I don't know if a Google Sheet, we'd have to ask Dave Kelly about sharing documents in that form, if that would be okay from an IT securities perspective. But for the simpler things, I think it's feasible, but for something more complex, I think we would need to talk about that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good point, right? There's some data that we might not be able to share in a preliminary way or it's just too voluminous to share in the Google Sheet, right? So, yes, Ms. Laborius.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. And just for an odd thought, if you want to look at our document, we do link to the backup detail in the Google Share document and then we reference that and so that backup material is also available to the public. So in the case where it references a spreadsheet, for example, we'll link directly to it and we have that hyperlinked when we publish that information as well.
Thank you. Mr. Testani?
Yeah, I just had a, want to backtrack for a minute. I know we sort of kidded it around at the beginning of the meeting tonight. Since you brought it up, there were a few meetings, I think I want to say we probably went past 2:00 AM.
We're going to, we're going to discuss that.
Certainly 1:00 AM at the, at the budget meeting. Okay, so you want to wait on that piece? Okay, fine. Well, I'm asking, you brought it up about how there had been a limit, I guess, at one point, so that's why I'm.
The, the RTM has a limit and they have, there's some rules that the, the RTM has that are, I don't know if they're even published rules, but they're, you know.
They have their rules to regulate. They're published documents.
They are published.
It's called Rules to Regulate, which they, there's probably 17 to 30 different ones that they have.
Right.
And if they want to change that during the meeting, they have to all vote on it and changing that.
Right, two-thirds.
That rule that they regulate themselves with.
Yeah. My point was that, and maybe that's a bad example, but we've never had a rule about extending the time of the meetings. The, the, sorry, the requirement to vote to extend the meeting past a certain point. Yeah. I'll, I'll bring up one. So first select person's address, even though I think that brings value and I think there is value to having that address, I think there may be some, if you want to talk about time, if we could dedicate ourselves to watching that during the Board of Selectmen and the RTM could watch that during, you know, when, when it's, I mean, everything's on fair TV today, right? We could probably, you know, not, you know, we could, I don't know if we could eliminate that or not. I know some people like to ask questions during that review, so maybe that address could be, you know, watched on fair TV as a part of, as part of our normal process and then we could submit questions, you know, outside of that. Ms. Charlton?
Yeah, so just one thought on that. If, if the, if the charter revision does pass, we're going to have some changes in that regard anyway because that may happen during a joint meeting. But, but if it doesn't, I still think there's value to having that presentation in a joint meeting. And I had made these comments to the Charter Review Commission for the simple reason that once the budget document is out in the public, all elected officials, Board of Finance, RTM, Board of Selectmen, all start getting input from the public. And I think it would be valuable for everyone to have that overview presentation from the first select woman at the beginning of the process together so that it's, you know, it's in an open forum. And then, again, assuming the process doesn't change, when it comes to the Board of Finance, that presentation could be limited to just a clear explanation of what the Board of Selectmen changed and why. Because that's always been confusing to me. The book doesn't change, so we've got numbers that we're marking up manually and we forget when we're looking at comparisons, so. And the same for the RTM. You know, they could have a summary presentation which is maybe limited to the changes that came before them. So I, I like that idea a lot. I think it takes up a lot of time the first night of our meeting. It's duplicative for the administration and I think that getting us all informed from a, just to be able to respond to members of the public, because it doesn't matter to the members of the public where this is in the process. It could be sitting with the Board of Selectmen, but we're being asked questions and just to, you know, be better informed about what they are, I think would be helpful. I did have another comment about the, some of the budget material, several thoughts actually, but are we still only talking about good things or are we talking about?
We're still talking about pre-meeting, but no, we can go, I have no additional office to follow up.
I'd like to follow up on Chairwoman Charlton about what you just said, which I'm not, I'm not against, it might be a good, but when you're talking about doing that, are you talking about no questions? Like that we would get that presentation and then we'd get the Board of Ed's presentation the same night and no questions? Because I don't know whether personally I want to stay there with 40 RTM people asking questions, our whole board, the Board of Selectmen, all firing questions when each of our bodies is going to get our own chance at it. So that's my only problem with it. If you just wanted to have the presentation and the Board of Ed make their presentation on their budget so we all hear it at the same time, I have no problem with that. That's, that's all great. And then when we get our first night at it, our first crack at it, if you want to start with a session. if you want to start with a session where we ask about the presentation, so that both the board and the first select woman are prepared to come, and that's what they address, say, "Hey, we'd like to talk to you about your presentation." So, anybody have any questions for, before we get started? You've all heard it, we've had the right to hear it. Do you have any questions about the presentations? Then, I would fully support that, because I believe there's time savings, but I don't know if it makes sense for, to have 50-something people in a room all firing questions for four hours after a 30-minute presentation.
Yeah, I don't think...
Can I respond to that? Do you mind if I respond to that?
Oh, yeah.
I think, no, I think that your comment, Mr. Walsh, dovetails with Ms. Marmian's comment about the questions in advance, and as you're listening to the presentation from the first select woman before the meeting of the Board of Finance, to, you know, if you guys, we always, we always love to get questions in advance. It's a, you know, it's a much better situation, it's going to make the meetings go a lot smoother, so any, anything that piques your interest during that presentation or prompts questions, you know, we're happy to take those before the, before the next board starts its meetings.
Yeah, I love this idea. It could be as simple as the first select woman literally taping it, doing the presentation, and putting it out to all of us, and then we ask questions in advance, I mean, and then she wouldn't even have to do it for the Board of Selectmen. You know, so, in today's structure, she wouldn't have to do it three times, she would have to do it once in front of a camera, right? I think that's a great idea.
Can I just ask you a clarifying question? I just want to make sure I understand what was being proposed. Is the suggestion that the first select woman makes a presentation which would be available to all three boards without a follow-up Q and A, because the Q and A would come in subsequent meetings?
Yeah, without, what's being recommended is, I think, the first select woman would still make a presentation, but each, she wouldn't do it three times, and each individual board wouldn't question her on the spot. We would, we could all listen to it independently, submit questions, and then our first budget meeting, as Mr. Walsh said, we could say, you know, here's, here's our questions for, you know, the first select woman.
That's what I thought was being suggested, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think that makes a ton of sense.
Yeah, and I think the reason, like, we, if you think about our budget process last year, we spent our entire first meeting, so we had nine meetings, I believe, eight or nine meetings, an entire evening on the overview presentation and nonprofits. To me, that's an entire meeting that, you know, I'm going to question the value of. I mean, certainly the overview presentation was valuable, but I would have found it more valuable had I listened to it earlier, you know, at the same time as the other bodies. And then, I'll talk about the, kind of the nonprofits later, but I do think that there's, you know, again, some of this may change if charter revision passes. I personally didn't, and I'm on, I was on the record, didn't love the charter revision changes, because I don't like bigger meetings, I feel like when there's a bunch of us together, I feel like the quality of the discussion is not as, you know, robust and meaningful, and it gets harder, that's my personal opinion. So, I don't know what's going to happen there, but if we continue forward, I do think that's one area where a joint presentation could be helpful. Again, not really just for the purpose of saving time during a subsequent meeting, but for the benefit of us having the information earlier. I think that's where I really like it, because when I think about the first select woman's presentation, I'm looking at Jared, because he probably put it together, you know, it has the key drivers of the budget. There's a summary of new headcount requests, there's a summary of personnel, there's key, key things in there that are very important to understanding the overall equation. And so, you know, that, that gives a framework for me when I'm trying to prepare for my first budget meeting, and it's just helpful. So, that's, that's the main reason why I suggest that, but thank you.
And I'll say another thing. There's been very few years where the next day I didn't go, "Why didn't I ask that question about the presentation?" Right? If we get that, if it's literally a video, and we can watch it, and we can formulate our questions, you get to think about it for a day, and, you know, because it's, you know, that first meeting is, you know, we all, we all know it's going to go late, so we're like, "Okay, we're done with this, let's move on to the next thing." So, I think that's a great recommendation. And to ask your previous question, we can lump all these things, what went well, what didn't go well, we can, and we've already gone to what we can improve already, so that's good stuff.
Mr. Dewitt, can I ask?
Ms. Vitale.
Can I ask a follow-up, just in terms of the superintendent's presentation of the Board of Education budget? I, I agree with Mr. Walsh in terms of, I think it's wonderful to present both the first select woman's budget and the super, Board of Education budget at that point. I would be very hesitant about taking Q and A. For those of you that have watched the Board of Ed budget presentation, the superintendent presents the budget at the end of a regular meeting, we don't get into Q and A. There is an opportunity for just some, you know, large questions, if you need anything clarified about the presentation that just doesn't, you know, make sense, and that's really it. And then the Q and A comes afterwards. Love the idea of getting questions in advance, because so many of the questions that you ask, very often the Board of Education has already asked them, so it just would, you know, free up some of staff's time and your meeting time.
So, your suggestion is to have this, have the Board of Ed presentation, similar to the first select person's presentation, a video of some sort that is presented, we watch it, we, you know, comprehend it, take a day or so to think about it, then when you come before us, we start to ask some questions.
I mean, I don't want to speak for the new superintendent, I invite him to come up if he has some thoughts as well, but I, Ms. Laborious, Mr. Peterson, I'm jumping if you disagree, but I would suggest, definitely suggest that. There is often some changes, I will, I want to caveat out there, as the Board of Education budget makes its way through the town bodies, very often the presentation does change, especially between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Some of the questions that the Board of Selectmen ask does inform what we present to the Board of Finance. There's also the time that elapses from the time that we approve our budget to when it goes to the first select woman, and ultimately to you, sometimes new information becomes available that needs to be worked into the presentation. So, I would just ask, after the, the main budget presentation, just if we need to do a little PowerPoint with any updated information, you would give us a little bit of leeway on that.
Yeah. I think the superintendent's budget presentation is at the same level as the first select woman. The first select woman saying, "I'm going to hire two new people, I'm going to hire intendents, new police, I'm going to, you know, reorganize," whatever. The superintendent's budget message is going to say, you know, after two whole days, "Are you going to tell us what's going to change with the Board of Ed?" He's not listening to me.
Well, I just...
But I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, I think we could all benefit from that being a, a presentation that we can all absorb outside of a meeting. And by the way, that Board of Ed night is pretty, pretty full, too, right? So, if we can take the action to have that video presentation before, take the action to review that, and free that night up, yeah.
I just would add that I think the decisions that are being made are very complex, there are two big, large budgets that need to be acted upon, and to digest it, as you guys are suggesting, and ladies, and be able to then present questions after you've reviewed it maybe two or three times, however, I think to your point, would be a lot more effective in being able to get the process moving along, rather than to sit, and to your point, sir, Mr. Testane, I think, you know, not a lot of great decisions come after, late into the night, and I think this process would be a lot smoother in the way you're proposing.
I would, can I just say one thing? And I just want to thank Mr. Walsh for raising that point, because traditionally, the overview presentation that we've had from the first select woman is excellent, but it basically has the Board of Education as a line item, right? So, it's really the town, it's an overview of the town budget, effectively, right? It will acknowledge what the increase is in the Board of Ed budget, but it doesn't get into any detail. So, having the two pieces, especially considering the relative size of the Board of Education budget as an overview, I think, is really helpful, because, you know, I don't, everyone knows this, but nine meetings, and we have one night typically devoted to the Board of Education, so I think that upfront overview would, would benefit all of us.
Just one small...
Do you want me to do, yeah, okay.
But just one small time, I mean, I think if it's going to be presented on one night, both of them, I think the Board of Ed should go first, because if the first select woman or first select man in the future is going to make a change to that budget, they can at least follow up with the reason why they are, after you've just watched the Board of Ed budget, of why they may or may not, and maybe they just accept it, or maybe they make a change, but they at least have a chance to get the entire town to know what that changes.
That is a fair point, in that the first select woman does address the Board of Ed in her address, so we would want to see the Board of Ed message, superintendent's message, even though it's been voted upon before the Board, the first select woman has, makes her presentation, but, okay. Ms. Marmian?
Thanks. I just want to reference the fact that we're talking about watching fair TV presentations or et cetera, and I, I just want to say to this board, what I find most useful prior to a budget hearing for the Board of Finance is watching the Board of Selectmen meetings, where the actual issues are first addressed, discussed, changes are made, and I think it behooves all of us, if possible, in terms of getting this pre-meeting information, to watch what the discussion is, the rationale from the Board of Ed, the rationale from the administration, because otherwise we just kind of repeat the wheel when we come into the Board of Finance meetings. That's not to say that I don't, I don't think we should combine those meetings. I find it personally so helpful to hear what the questions are, to hear what the rationale is, and I think we all gain from having that kind of pre-game meeting to learn from, and then we get the answers to questions that are asked to the Board of Select, we get answers to the questions that are asked at the Board of Selectmen level that I think are so helpful and informative. So, for what it's worth, I'd encourage us all to watch those Board of Selectmen meetings.
Please.
I watch some of the Board of Selectmen meetings, but, you know, I'll be honest, I think that, and respectfully, I think that's a good idea in theory, but I think about, for example, the RTM, you know, we all know how long we sit in our budget meetings. To ask 40 volunteers to sit through and watch all of our budget hearings on top of their own responsibilities is a lot. People work full-time, this is, it's a lengthy process, and I think that, I think it's a lot to ask. You know, I know, I watch meetings of other bodies when I have a particular interest, or if there's something I want to go back and understand, but I'm not certain that that's something that can be done consistently. I mean, I think the overview lends itself to a joint meeting, whether it's on WebEx, I'm not sure I'm crazy about the idea of a video, but maybe a WebEx meeting with a limited, you know, number of questions, only if they're really clarifying questions. But I do think it's, it's the responsibility of, of, you know, management on both sides to, to present to the boards, because I just don't, I don't think it's really possible for everybody to follow meetings outside of the body they already sit on. I know for me it's not, so I would just throw that out.
I think the overview presentations lend themselves to this kind of, this venue of a presentation, because they're, they're really setting a tone, right? First select woman wants to do, implement these specific things in her budget, the new superintendent wants to implement these things in his budget, we can all absorb that information and then write down, write down questions and ask, ask later.
Madam Chair. The budget document and the budget presentation, the budget is the, is the most important thing that we do, and I think to have the first presentation be done on video would really diminish it. So, I can tell you that from our perspective as administration, it's important that, that first presentation be done live, and there may be some question about who is there, who attends that presentation. I think in the, in the first select woman's mind, it would be great if it were a joint meeting of all the, the two, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and the RTM, at least two, and maybe it's under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, with an invitation to the members of the other boards to attend. But it's, to me, it's very important that that first presentation be done live.
I, I kind of agree with that. I, that meeting cannot turn into, I think as Mr. Walsh said, you know, 30, 40 people asking questions. There has to be an understanding that, here's the presentation, thank you, and each body will be able to ask their questions or submit questions in advance, and that their particular meetings can, can ask questions about the presentation. I just, that's my only concern, so, but I do agree with you. I, I think it has to be a meeting, either maybe a WebEx meeting, or maybe just have it at, you know, the Ludlow High School, the auditor, exactly, auditorium, and it's a, it's, it's, it's the presentation. So, that's my thoughts on that.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Not to echo, but I do agree that there's a, there's an energy level with a live presentation. I think what I heard almost unanimously, if not unanimously, from this board, is that the concern is the follow-up questions, and with the large audience, it could get out of control. So, I do think that anyone who wants to re-watch a live presentation on fair TV, that we can always do that, right? But I do think that a live presentation with the understanding of no questions that night, you take your notes, and then you can submit those questions following the presentation, but before each body's respective meetings, that to me seems like the natural rhythm. I think we're on the same page, but, yeah.
Can I just, I want to, I agree with Mr. Schmidt, and also, in terms of a live meeting, it's also the public, I think, an opportunity for the public to, I would say no WebEx, I would have it in person in one of the auditoriums, have the first select person, superintendent present, allow the public to come and hear the presentation live. So, I think that we are in agreement on this. Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate the point of where we have the questions in advance, you know, and have the opportunity to respond meaningfully, it's so helpful, I think, as a partner with the board, because we're able to answer them thoughtfully, give substantive information, make sure that we are comprehensive, and then when we get to the public, the public has access to that information, we still discuss the content so that it's in a public forum, and it's just transparent and meaningful. The thing that's helpful for us is an agreed process in advance. So, I would just add that, who can submit the question, so through whom, whether it comes through the chair, or for example, for us, it comes directly in the Google Doc by the board members, and we have agreed upon time where the document freezes, so that we have the opportunity to finalize all of our responses, and then have an agreed upon forum to share those responses. That's been really, really helpful, and helps us move the process along in a way that is collaborative and positive.
Okay, Mr. Walsh?
Sure. So, are you saying from the Board of Ed side, you wouldn't want it to be WebExed on the night of the, the live thing? Like, so that if somebody just wanted to watch it from home and not come in, they couldn't watch it live?
No, well, I think that I wouldn't want it to be just WebEx.
No, I agree.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they're hybrid, like we're doing tonight.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I think it'd be better live. I have no prob, I, I think it'd be better live. I mean, you know, maybe because I was a litigator for so many years, I think it's best live. I don't want people, like, recording it 25 times until they think they got, like, just go live with it and go, okay? Fly without, fly without the net, you know, walk, walk the tightrope without the net, and just go. And I think it should be broadcast, if somebody doesn't want to come in or to watch it later, it should be on fair TV, maybe live, and also, they can go back and watch the fair TV broadcast again at another point in time, go on YouTube or something. Thank you.
Great. Just one other note. I'll combine all these comments, present them back through, circulate them through the board, and then we can maybe vote on them at a later point. Anything else with pre-meeting information?
Is this broadly comments on the budget book?
Nope, that's next. Materials are next.
Gotcha.
One pre-item, item I have, and I'm just having a hard time remembering. Well, one pre-item item I have, and I'm just having a hard time remembering last budget, like, how far in advance did we have the budget book?
Not, not very much.
Okay, we need a little more time.
We usually, the budget book is usually published about, about a week before the Board of Selectmen starts taking it up.
So we will have it, can all bodies have it, a week before deliberations start at the Board of Selectmen? Will you guys commit to that?
I think that if we put it online, I think that's very doable, like, you know, you can have, you can have access, you want a physical book?
Yeah, physical book. What's the problem with a physical book?
I mean, sitting right here, I don't see any physical problems with it, but if I say I have no physical problems with it, seeing right here, and then going back to my desk tomorrow, I realize it may be a problem, then everybody will hold me to what I just said. So, so I don't agree, I don't disagree with you in principle, but I just want to give myself the ability to come back to it.
Okay. I personally think that should be the goal, and I think that if you cannot meet that goal and realize that in the next 10 days, you should have to get back to our chairwoman and explain why.
Fair enough.
I just want to echo that with regard to the Board of Ed budget. I mean, as soon as we can get that publication maybe along the same timeframe as the town budget, I think it'll help us be more prepared, perhaps before the presentation is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was gonna-
You have to be done by January 30th, right, with your budget?
Yeah, and of course, it says nothing about the town side, but it, as we know, it's a huge chunk of, so, I think that, I think that would be fine, I certainly understand the need for the physical book, but I kind of wanted to loop back to something Ms. Marmian said earlier about watching the meetings, and, you know, it's hard, we have, we have multiple meetings during, during January, we get into a lot of detail. You know, one thing that's worked well for us in the past is, is having a liaison to other boards. We, you know, obviously, it's difficult, it's easy to say, just watch all the meetings, but there are a lot of meetings. But if, I don't know whether it would be helpful for your body to have a dedicated liaison to our body for the sake of, hey, these are the top five things that have generated the most questions in the Board of Ed debate, I don't know whether that would be helpful, but in, you know, in concert with having the book in your hand as well, that may streamline things at that, at that end.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Duitt. Just to follow up on that, similar to what Ms. Charlton talked about, how it's difficult to commit to attending all these meetings, right? And you just talked about having lots of meetings, and we know that we're about to go into lots of meetings. But one thing I do think that would be helpful is the document that you, that you described earlier. I actually wasn't aware that that was available, and it's great that it's available, not just to the board, but to the public as well, but maybe just getting on a distribution list so that we see those questions that are being asked that are budget-specific, and it's in our inbox, and that just facilitates communication, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I know in the past, it's been, it's been publicly available, once it's been released by the administration, but I think it would be not difficult to put you on a distribution list. And I will say that often, our board asks different tones of questions, obviously, than this board does, which kind of makes us work well together, but certainly if it can help you frame your questions, we're not going to give you all the context, that, you know, we're more interested in student experience and educational attainment, and, but if it helps frame your questions, I think that's to the good.
The only other comment I want to make, Madam Chair, on the pre-meeting, if I recall correctly, to get to Mr. Walsh's point, I think, I believe the first budget meeting we had, there were other items on our agenda besides the budget on the very first meeting. So, and it's certainly understandable, there were probably outstanding items, I don't recall what they were exactly off the top of my head, but they, I know did not pertain to the budget, so perhaps a special meeting, if there are other items that we need to deliberate on as a board before we start the budget process, it certainly seems like it would be more logical to have it on a different night.
Agreed. I mean, there are times when, you know, it's just hard to find a night, or make sure we have a quorum for something and pull together a special meeting, but absolutely, I think the budget meeting should be clean, and sometimes you just, you know, it happens. Same thing with quarterly meetings, we shouldn't be having a bunch of voting items during a quarterly meeting, but sometimes it's a choice between taking 30 minutes to put that in, or trying to round up everyone for a special meeting, so we'll do our best, but I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, I think there, Madam Chairwoman, there was some special things that were, that had to be heard by the administration, and you were kind of forced to do it because of our aggressive schedule we were trying to keep, and people's availabilities that you had asked about.
Okay, so I'm going to move us on to materials. So, what, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, okay, great. So what I'm talking about with materials is the budget book, any, any handouts we get, when we get handouts, how frequently we get handouts, so what went well, what didn't go well, what would you like to improve? Ms. Claire?
So I actually like when we get the budget book in a binder, and that way we can add the updates right into the booklet. Is that feasible?
So I may have to send out an anonymous survey monkey.
And it needs to be blue, not pink.
We're going to tell you, these are, these are asks, the Budget Committee tells the Budget Director.
I feel as though there may be a silent majority here that likes the ring binders.
Oh.
So.
We could take a vote. Toll is against the binder.
No. Yeah, so the problem that we run into with the binder, with the three-ring binders, is that the pages rip out so easily, those things, they come apart so easily, and that's why, I'm just telling you where, where we stand, I like the spiral budget better, and any of those attachments, we, you know, we just keep a separate, separate folder of.
What does our board want to do? We're making recommendations, we're not making recommendations, we're, we're making, I don't want to state demands.
Three-ring binder.
Three-ring binder, raise your hands.
I would agree. Later on, for what Mary said, the second book, when it's the final budget, yes, for convenience, it's done.
All right. Yeah, Frank, yeah, it's nine books, nine books for us.
Think yourself, and we just approved for you there, Frank.
I'd be willing to give you 15 years of old binders that you can reuse. I swear to God, you can have them all. I got them all, for crying out loud, right. Okay, anything else on materials, Ms. Marmian?
No, I don't want to confuse the soup here, but I don't know where this falls. Where, it's not really materials, something that helped us, I think, last year, and this goes to what Ms. Charlton brought up, is that we, we only had the department heads there if we had a specific question. Maybe you did a survey of us ahead of time and said, you know, does any, is anybody going to have questions for the town clerk, or is anybody, for the nonprofits, for example, and we only had those nonprofits there who were-
We were going to talk about physical meetings.
So that's, I wasn't sure where this was held under, but-
What I'd like to discuss on materials is the physical things that we get, you know, do, do we want, you know, I'm not an advocate of this, but do we want a hard copy of absolutely everything that gets sent to us, you know, you know, so, Ms. Charlton?
So, I do, I have a number of comments on the materials, so maybe I'll take them in pieces, and I just, I just want to start out by saying that to Frank and Jared, please take this in the spirit in which it's intended, not trying to beat anybody up here, but I just want to point out a couple things that I, I thought were important. I was reflecting, and I actually made notes to myself after the budget hearings on things that I thought took us a lot of time, or that perhaps weren't as clear as they should be. So, I think it's really important that the actual budget book be supplemented with comparative information when there's any structural changes to any departments, and this would go for the Board of Ed too. For example, last year, the ECC was broken out as a separate fund, and we didn't have comparative information to the prior years provided. So, I had asked for it prior to the meeting, the information was provided about a half hour before the meeting. I don't, I'm going to guess board members didn't have time to review that and, you know, prepare questions. So, the question of comparability, it was obvious, you had the information ready, you had already looked at this when you were going through your own review. So I'm suggesting that that sort of material be included in our budget book, along with the comparative, you know, along with other data. Another example, the new Parks Department was presented without comparative information. That night, I, you know, I remember I was racing to get prepped, realized I didn't know what I was looking at, we got that comparative information, or I got it minutes before the meeting, I don't even think it was distributed to the board, it ended up being on a screen where we looked at it, it didn't get in the backup. So, I, those types of things complicated a discussion that was really quite straightforward, you know, when you looked at the, when you looked at, you know, two departments combined equal the new one this year compared to, you know, or the new one, you know, last year compared to the, to budget this year. So, I think wherever we have anything structural like that, or movement of personnel between departments, I think we need explanatory detail in the, as part of the budget book that lays that out. And those types of structural changes, I think, should also be highlighted in the day-one overview that the first select woman provides. I think, you know, the Parks Department kind of caught me by surprise, I don't know why I didn't focus on it, but I didn't realize that until right before the meeting. So I think there are some, there are, and I don't remember offhand whether this was an issue with the Board of Education, whether we had a lack of comparability, but that's the sort of thing that I think causes a lot of confusion and time. There is one department that I just, as I was flipping through the book to jog my memory, I think it was private school bus transportation, where there was like a neat little example in the preamble, or there was a page in the book that, you know, showed metrics, it put in some supplemental information that was really helpful, and I find when we look at materials, you know, we have a comparison to prior year numbers in most cases, and not a lot else, and I think that we sort of, we go into the meeting, and it's like, okay, tell me about your budget, and we kind of start from scratch every year. So I just, to the extent we could have in the book, you know, not voluminous data, but something simple to summarize, which is, you know, probably the same types of questions you guys are reviewing and asking when you're reviewing the budget internally, to me, that would be quite helpful.
Can I, can I just respond to kind of that last piece? I think a difficult part of that, of, and we've thought about that, and we've had internal conversations about putting more information like that in, and replace kind of some of the wordy budget messages that you guys see, and have some of that more detailed information. The part that becomes hard about that is, up until pretty much we finalize the book and the, and the mil rate sheet, which is that first sheet with all the calculations that you see, things are constantly changing. And, you know, for some of the bigger items, like to your point, the Parks Department, the ECC, I think those changes, those really aren't going to vary that much, so I think that would be something that's more doable, that has more of a substantial scope, if you want to say. And I can think of this year, you know, last year, you, you had said that we wanted the library presentation to be one presentation, and so this year, the library presentation will be one presentation, but I think there needs to be, for that information, if we kind of talk about, if we provide calculations for each department, ultimately, like I said, up until that point, I'm going back and forth with departments about things that we may do, things on those sheets may change, calculations may change, and, you know, that time crunch, it could create pages like that with errors. So I think if we had a scope that we wanted to follow about, you know, for, the Parks Department is a really good example, I think that's a really good place to start, and we could see how that works in the first year, and then continue to look at it, but that would be my recommendation as far as that goes.
So, I don't, I don't think what we're looking for is a narrative that says, the library budget's going up 3.2 percent. I think what Ms. Charlton's getting to is the things you'd know about way before, the library is, we're going to close Fairfield Woods Library, or something like that, there's a big structural change happening, and you're going to see 10 lines that are going to be X-ed out, and why is that? Because this just happened, right?
Or, or anything, just to be, anything that affects comparability, that to me was a, that's an easy one.
Right.
But it seemed like, you know, and then we wound up with the information on email, and it was, it was a little, you know, we just, we could have breezed through those conversations, I think, more quickly, and, you know, so I don't know if there's anything like that this year on either side, but, but those are things, I think, that can, you know, take ti, if we're looking to take time out of the process, make the meetings more efficient, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, but a budget narrative that describes what's going on, and then, you know, let's be fair, though, our board also has to make a commitment to read these things, right? So we can't look at, you know, my example, so my apologies to everyone at Fairfield Woods Library, but my, my, my example of, you know, the library's closed, you know, we can't go, oh, what's happening with Fairfield Woods Library? No, we have to take for the fact that the narrative says, you know, what's happening here.
I just want to explore with Madam Chairwoman, and I'm just asking this to see what your thoughts are, since it was your idea. Instead of it being in the budget book from the very beginning, can, how would you feel about getting some, like, say the, one of your examples is the Department of Public Works, the way it changed around. 72 hours beforehand, if you want to make some type of presentation, you have to send it to us, but 72 hours before. This way, we have, we know Public Works is coming up, we're all getting ready for that discussion, it's a large budget. We'd have some supplemental document with whatever graphs or reasoning they had for what they wanted to do, but we'd have to have it three days beforehand, not five minutes before the meeting, not an hour before the meeting, where many of us might be at the end of a day meeting and not be able to get to it. I don't know, what's your thoughts on, I'm just asking, I'm just exploring it.
So, yeah, and I, I have my stream of consciousness here that I wrote, and I, yeah, those are some thoughts as well. I mean, I, in terms of, you know, to the broad goal of making the meetings more effective and more efficient, the, the specific items that I just brought up with Parks and Rec and, what was the other one, ECC, were really just comparability, like, you, you know, that to me should be in the budget book. To your point, though, there were other items where, and DPW's a great example, where, you know, you have a $2 million line item for contracted property services, and every year, I'm like, what's in there? What, you know, what, what are we doing? Like, there are certain, certain budgets like that, that have a lot of costs that are non-payroll, that I think we could benefit from some, some additional information, whether it's in the form of a presentation in the book or not in the book. So, I agree, you know, Public Works operations, paving is another one, we always ask a bunch of questions about paving. It would be useful to have, you know, some information in there in the book. What did we say we were going to do? What did we end up doing? Why did that change? Was it costs? Was it other things? So, it may be that some of those things can't be in the book from, from the beginning, and I appreciate that, so I think maybe it would depend. I was, I think my last comment was more focused on where we have structural changes that affect comparability, and by that I mean combining departments, breaking out departments, moving personnel, you know, because whenever we had, you know, these people moved from this department to this department, so we're all with our calculators trying to figure out how much payroll really went up or down, those things, I feel like that's unnecessary time that we could, you know, we could be more effective by having that data in the book. Your point, I think, is another, a different, but very valid one, which is, what type of presentation are we actually getting from the department heads, and what's, what's there to support that presentation, aside from, you know, this year's number, last year's number? So, if that-
Can I, can I also add to that?
Well, I also want to, I think Mr. Walsh brings up a good point that I, that I wanted to bring up. We cannot receive material on Tuesday morning and talk about it Tuesday night, and it, it needs to be- And it, it needs to be our board to say, so we got some information today, I don't know if it's 72 hours or 48 hours, 'cause some of our meetings aren't even three days between these, or, so we can, we can debate the time, but we've gotta have a regiment to say, listen, you gave it to me this morning, I guess we'll talk about it the next meeting on Tuesday. And, and I don't know what we wanna put that at, 48, 72 hours, but we do need to have material in advance.
And just one follow-up. You fit it in with your presentation wherever you want. I, I heard Frank saying we're not breaking out the two libraries. We've never talked about that. We've never voted on it. When we decided to split it out, this board had voted on splitting it out. So to some point, we'd need to have a conversation about that.
I think that was the library director suggested it, so we kinda said to Frank, you, yeah, so you're right, we didn't vote on it, so, yeah.
Yeah, and what I'm, and what I meant by that is, is within the book, they'll still be broken out as two separate departments, but when he does his presentation-
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
It'll be, it'll be, you know, the combined number of those two. And to your point for comparability, I wouldn't just leave last two and say, figure it out and add them up. I would add both departments together for the prior year also.
Thank you, Frank.
Mr. Burley?
Yeah, thank you. Shifting gears a little bit, but sticking with the materials. You know, one of the things that I'm sure the staff spends a lot of time on is the budget, budget message, and it's very qualitative in nature. Doesn't add a lot of value for me personally. What I would, what would be more valuable to me is if the, if the, the big drivers and movements in the numbers for that particular department that we're looking at are described. So I don't necessarily need to know, like, there's, this is really fluffy stuff and, and maybe it doesn't save you time to cut it out because maybe it's cut and paste year over year, I don't know. But I would think that you can get a lot of personnel hours back by revamping your qualitative components of the book and then focus your time, the qualitative is really just talking about the big drivers on the page, the numbers themselves.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Wallace.
No, 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 I'll, you could explain, I, I just, I'll explain something afterwards.
No, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, that the budget messages are, are wordy and they, it's kind of a historical thing that they've been done that way. And we've talked about making them more qualitative and kinda showing the changes. The issue with that is that the departments do prepare those budget messages. And so I, so it's, it's easier for me to, to, if, if we, I would have to rely on the department heads to some degree to, to do a lot of that comparison. And they'll all, and I'll guarantee you, they'll all format it differently. All the analysis won't be the same. And with all the changes that we're kinda discussing, I don't know if I would be able to monitor that with some of the other changes that we've discussed.
But, but we can help you with that, right? So I, I get that you're delegating out and asking the department heads to provide the qualitative summaries and such, but it, if it saves the administration and the department heads' time, I would think that would be a, a plus. Not just about saving us time in our meetings, but it's overall, right? The whole town. But, but I think they can, we can follow a kind of a template so that if, if, if a number is fairly flat year over year and there's not a story there, we don't, they don't need to spend time describing it. But if they're seeing a movement in a number, up or down, whether it's to budget or last year's actuals or whatever it is, that's what I wanna understand. So I, I think we can give the department heads a little guidance as to what would be informative for us and hopefully save them time.
Go ahead, Mr. Wallace.
My follow-up, I guess, to that, and I'm glad you brought that up, because some of those are all over the board. Some are the same ones every year about what our department does. Others, and I'll tell you, as one of the most embarrassing two moments of my life on this board, was asking a question of why a number changed and having another member saying, oh, it's in the description up above. 'Cause I got so used to not reading them because they were, some of them were repetitive. But it's almost like if we had a section on drivers for your department, like, we kind of, all kinda know what the departments do, but if we had like, if there was like, in a department, like you said, something we should know, like drivers for your individual budget, we'd all probably just go right there. And, and it would probably save a bunch of questions and time.
I mean, I just wanna, I might be off with the specifics, but I feel like we spent over an hour on Fair TV, if you guys remember that. And it was fascinating, but that's a $100,000 budget, okay? It went from $79,000 to $100,000. That's a lot of time in relative terms to spend on a budget like that. And there were, you know, that's a 20% increase, so there were a bunch of things that happened and a bunch of changes. That's a perfect example of something where the driver should be in some kind of table or clearly laid out. So it's, it's, it's a small budget, it's got a big change, we shouldn't be spending an hour on that. Register our voters, another example. They had some verbiage, but none of it was accompanied by numbers. So it was like, yeah, we're gonna have a primary and yes, there's redistricting, so our budget went up, but, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have it laid out. So I, I think there's an awful lot of those where we wouldn't, maybe not an awful lot, but there are a number of those where we probably would not need to, you know, schedule those departments or, you know, have those lengthy discussions if that data was there. Because they're self-explanatory and it's not big numbers. So that's, that's my two cents on that one.
It's, it's, it's a good point, and, you know, I wanna bring up one point about the time we spend here, right? All our time is valuable, but, you know, as, as the Budget Committee, really what, what I'm worried about is, is, is quality, right? I've often said, I really don't care how late we have to go to get a quality product out of our meetings. At midnight, sometimes I might be rethinking that, but I really think there is a happy compromise here where we could get, you know, it's almost like FAQ. I can tell you, every year, I'm gonna ask the, somebody's gonna ask the library budget, how much is in printed material? How much is in video materi-, you know? We could look, we could look back very quickly and answer all these questions. And in, in the, and when you talk about time, right? If, if we have real, so what I wrote down, where, you know, what, what are our drivers? What's driving the budget, right? We, I go down that budget and say, 0000, 85% change, I'm gonna talk about that. If you can, if we can get a narrative on all of these big changes, or something structural or something strategic, you know, we might look at that and just go, okay, thanks, I won't even need to see these people. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Matola.
If, and I, we, we kinda get that in the Board of Ed budget book, right? You, you have great detail with respect to if there's something that's a substantial change.
Yes.
And you, you really do that. I don't know if, Frank, I'm not picking on you, I promise, but i- is it, is your budget just pretty much generated, the budget book from a Munis program? Is that?
No.
No, it's not, okay.
Yeah. So I kinda wanted, I'm asking Prue to, to pass these around, and I thought it would be a good time because I, I'm hearing a lot of good feedback, and, and like I said, it's stuff that we've discussed, and I kinda wanted to pass this around to show the, the conversation that we're having in here. A lot, a lot of that conversation we've had internally. And, you know, we don't, we've already went through some of these, these items as it is, but I think one of the questions that you kinda raised, John, is going through, you know, how is the budget book generated? It, it's not generated right out of Munis. If it was generated right out of Munis, it, it wouldn't look very nice. I don't think you guys would like it. Just my experience. So, you know, it goes into different programs, you know, basic Excel, Word, we're looking at Visio as, as another program, which I can explain what that is, but it, it goes into there so we can make it into the budget book that everybody is seeing. Now, in the past, it was done very manually, so, you know, if, if anybody's familiar with Excel, you know, lookup functions weren't used, for example. So I've worked a lot over the summer and this year to automate that process where it comes from Munis in, into a Word document, and I don't need to manually enter anything. Not that I did last year, I was able to make it work, but I'm kinda trying to automate it, so there's, there's less mistakes. And like I said, I just wanted to, to show this because, you know, I, I hear a lot of good changes, like, they're changes that I'm thinking about. I just wouldn't wanna say that I could do them all, 'cause ultimately, I am one person that, that prepares the book. And in addition to preparing the book throughout this process, if you guys have questions, I look into almost, most of them. I, I prepare the book, the formatting, I look at what department heads submit to me, I review it, and I'm working with them to also review and analyze their, their budget. And so if anybody, you know, we could go on with the conversation we're having, but I just kinda wanted to circulate this now because I do hear a lot of things that we've discussed internally and I want everybody to know, I, I, I think about them and I'm, I'm looking at a plan to make the changes.
So I, I would really like to have seen this before we had our meeting tonight.
We can't talk about it.
I'd really like to have a discussion with, with the Budget Committee, which is Ms. Marmion and myself, I guess, right? There are a lot of good recommendations on here. I love the not-for-profit on one page, I love the org charts, yeah, we can talk about time, we'll talk about time limitation, yeah, we're, we're, we'll be stuck on that. But there are a lot of good things. So let's, let's schedule some time, Frank, if, if you don't mind, and we'll, that would be great, after we get through this. But this is, this is great, so thank you. Any other comments about materials?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Burley.
I've got one more, unrelated to what we've been talking about, but there's, there's one data point that I use in my professional life with budgets that is incredibly useful but isn't used in our process. And what I mean by that is, we, we look to a, a, a couple of years of actuals, then we look at the current year budget and then the proposed budget for next year. For me, it, the, the missing data point is, where do we think the current fiscal year is gonna end? We, we typically, in, in, in my day job, we look to the seven months of actuals, five months of forecasts, we call it a seven plus five, right? And, and, 'cause oftentimes, the forecast for the year is gonna vary from budget and it's also gonna vary from prior year actuals. So when I went through the budget book last year, I, I found myself wanting to know that piece of information for each of these departments. And I recognize that that's likely a process, a significant process change for you guys if you don't currently do that type of forecasting. I don't expect you to be able to turn that out. But to the extent that that type of data is available, I, I personally would find that data point probably to be the most valuable component of the budget.
Okay, thank you. Next topic is structure, if not if, it should be of meetings. So this, I'd like to discuss schedule, times, days, how many. We are gonna talk about physical meetings, which is the kinda where, how, longer, but what does anybody think about structure of meetings? With the schedule? Go ahead, Mr. Wallace, right?
Can you just update us, Chris? I know, 'cause you've been involved in this for so long. How many meetings do we have versus how many we had in the past? Was last year a year where we cut out some meetings? Or was it the year before?
When, during Mr. Tetro's last year as first selectman, and I don't remember what the year that was, excuse me, we changed the process, right? We changed the process from having joint meetings to into 2019?
2019.
The 2019 budget, so that would've been the 2020 budget process. When we changed from having joint meetings with the Board of Selectmen to having meetings, individual meetings in accordance with the charter. That year, we, we, we had to reduce our, we had to reduce our number of meetings just because, you know, we had to fit in two whole meeting schedules, a, a meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen and a, I think last year, we had, I wanna say eight meetings. of the meetings is a byproduct of how many we have, right? So if we said, let's have one meeting, we would be here for, you know, 18 hours, right? If we have eight meetings, you know, we'd probably be here 80 hours, right? Anytime, so, you know, I, I guess that's the discussion I wanna have, you know, what did we think about? How many meetings we had, you know, that everyone liked the fact that they were every three days? Sometimes we have two a week, sometimes we have three, you know, that kinda stuff.
Okay, I, I'll just go first, if you don't mind, Madam Chairwoman. I think we started running into a little bit of a problem when we cut back on the number of meetings. When we started cutting back on the number of meetings during that time. And therefore, there's a lot of departments and we started piling groups of departments that were, you know, we tried to keep the heavy stuff, DPW, and obviously, the Board of Ed gets their meetings on their own. But I think that if, I hear a lot of people, I understand it, and I mean, no, I, I don't wanna go till 2 o'clock in the morning. I don't have a problem if we have to, but if, whatever. But I think if we added a meeting or two and spread things out a little bit, it would be better for all of us, to be honest with you. Because we could spread things out. 'Cause that's when I started, started noticing that there was a problem. And I started, I guess, not enjoying it as much because it was just, it was just too, too much stuff. And you can either short-shift it and just not really ask all the questions you wanna ask, which I just don't do. I'll ask, you know, if I wanna ask questions, I should be able to get an answer to them before I vote on it. But I think that would go, I mean, I, trust me, the last thing I wanna do is spend another two nights. I love you guys, but, you know, to have another two days in March with everybody, or April, whenever we do this, but I just think it would be more relaxed.
Yeah. I, I, I will, I will say, we, we are certainly a lot more, we were trying to jam a lot more into eight nights than we did. I think we used to have at least 10 nights, at least, at least. But I'm not saying none of those meetings went to 1:00 in the morning for sure, 'cause, and don't forget, they were also combined meetings with the Board of Selectmen, so there was a lot of, you know, there was more people here to make comments. But now, I, I understand the comment.
And Madam Chair, I just wanna dovetail what Mr. Wallace was saying, 'cause I, I agree that also additional meetings might not be ideal, but that goes back to the time change, the time element of when do we cut the meeting off? 'Cause I know, speaking for myself, I heard a few comments during the budget process, you know, from various people, and it's understandable. I think I said it myself, that I was getting tired that particular time, it might've been midnight or past midnight, I don't remember exactly, but I know that I couldn't make a fa-, an effective decision after, let's say, four hours or five hours of being, of a meeting. So I, I understand if we went to, let's say, 10 meetings, maybe we limit the time to have it be required to end at 11:30 or midnight or whatever we all decide, just a, just an idea.
See, the, the issue with limiting time, right, is you spend a lot of time on a particular subject, you say, oh, it's 10 o'clock, let's go home, and we haven't talked to the four departments that are still on the budget, on, on that meeting agenda for the night. So we say, oh, we'll add those four on next week. It's a self-fulfilling prophecy, right? We'll, you know? And we used to budget snow days. I don't budget snow days anymore because we can all go remote, which is pretty nice, but to budget an additional three days just in case we ran over, you know? So I, I caution limiting the time a little bit, but Mr. Matola's right.
So I, I think to Jack's point, if we have an extra meeting or two scheduled, we're not gonna go to midnight or 12:30 because I, and maybe I'm wrong, you guys, I've, I've been here a long time. When we started having less meetings, that's when we started going to 12, 12:30. I don't remember that happening when we had an extra meeting or two. We'd be here till 11, 11:30 sometimes, but that would be it, so.
Sometimes we get out early.
Oh, yeah, 10, 10 o'clock, 10:30.
Half-day at 10 at PM.
Half-day. And the other thing we might consider doing, maybe in one of the meetings or two, the budget meetings, and I know if it's hard for people, I get it, maybe we start at 7:00 a clock a couple of the budget meetings instead of 7:00.
and I know if it's hard for people, I get it, maybe we start at seven o'clock a couple of the budget meetings, instead of seven-thirty, just, that's all.
And we have done that in the past, we can certainly implement that. Mr. Curly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. I'm sympathetic, having gone through it with everyone here this past cycle, yeah, going past midnight's not fun, I agree. It's hard to be able to concentrate. But, I also am sympathetic to Mr. Dewitt, your point regarding the hard stop. But, I do think we can manage that, to the extent that we spread out our agenda over more meetings, it means each agenda should be a little bit shorter. So, I think that's helpful, I also think that's more respectful to the staff and the department heads. I can remember Mr. Calabrese staying until after midnight and then being told, "Come back next meeting." And I just think we can be a lot more respectful, again, not just managing our time, but the department heads who have to join us. So, if we have a shorter agenda and spread it over more nights, I'm all for it.
Ms. Marmion?
So, getting back to the point where I believe last year, we told the chairwoman if they were, if we were gonna have specific questions for specific departments. And if we weren't, as a board, going to have those questions, we would say, "Please, you know, stand by, but we're likely not going to be asking you questions." So, I think that's also an effective way of trying to keep those meetings a little bit more streamlined.
So, can I give my contrarian opinion here then, because everybody wants to have more meetings?
Sure.
I would, I'd be an advocate of, so first of all, I wanna acknowledge what Mr. Testane said. Because you're right, the quality of the discussion and the debate at eleven-thirty or twelve o'clock goes down the drain. We're not doing, you know, we're not doing ourselves any favor. I remember the parks, yeah, all, everyone, you know, that's not good for anyone. It's not that we aren't committed or don't wanna be here, it's just that, you know, it impacts the quality of the discussion, so I'm very sympathetic to that. But, if, as I sort of flip through my notes that I made to myself, again, I'm just gonna couple things. One entire meeting, First Selectwoman's presentation and nonprofits, we spent hours on nonprofits. That is an entire evening, one example. We spent hours on the library budget, fair TV. If we go back and look at where we spent our time, we should, we did not make optimal use of our time, in my opinion. I think where we really need to spend a good amount of time is on the departments like DPW, like police, like fire, you know, ones where there are significant dollars, significant changes. But, all of the good suggestions that are being made here, to me, if they're done properly, they take time out of meetings. I'm also, and we get there without adding meetings on. I'm particularly interested in talking about what Frank and Jared have on number six. Not so much setting the time limits for meetings, but keeping the discussions focused on the budget. So, we have meetings, we have discussions that are fascinating, but aren't really meetings that need to happen during the budget process. We get the Director of Economic Development before us once a year to talk about the budget. So, naturally, people wanna ask questions, because the types of things that he's working on, that go on in this town, ultimately, will affect projects that have to happen, initiatives that will wind up in our lap somewhere, from a budgetary perspective. But, his own budget is, it's okay, it's flat from last year, you know, nothing really to talk about from that standpoint. But, the other information that we gain from that meeting, which I think everybody finds of value, takes up a bunch of time during our budget meetings. So, I'd love to have Mark Barnhart come on another night, because I think it's important to understand, if there's development around the Metro Center, you know, that's gonna affect our infrastructure needs and other things, that's Board of Finance business. But, it doesn't have to do with his department budget. So, you know, as I look at my long list here, and I'm happy to share my notes with everybody, I see a lot of things where, in my opinion, we can, from the suggestions Frank and Jared have made, from the suggestions everyone's made, and just reflecting on where we actually spent that time last year, where I believe we could really shorten the meetings and perhaps have less meetings, honestly. If we were to keep the meetings focused, if we're disciplined about getting questions submitted in advance, and if we have better budget materials. So, I know that's a lot, I'm not saying the process can transform overnight or in one year, but I think, you know, I mean, I love all you guys too, but, yeah, ten meetings, just, I sit here and I just had a little shiver when you said that, Jim, I mean, I have to be honest.
Well, to make you shiver a little less. What does everybody think about adding one meeting, compromise? See how it works with having this First Selectwoman's presentation? You raised some great points, I'd like to see the rest of your list, because you've raised some really good ones. So, for example, last year, I think that the nonprofits became a big discussion, because people were getting like forty percent increases, like out of the blue. And we're like, "What is this all about? Why do you need the forty percent increase?" So, if there's no increase, or a very small one, or maybe each nonprofit, maybe each nonprofit should have to write a two-page summary of what they're gonna do with the money and why they need an increase, if there's an increase. So, we have more material, so we have to ask less questions. I mean, they should have to do something for the money. I don't think it's a horrible idea to have each nonprofit, who wants thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money, to have to write up their own summary, explaining why they really need the money, especially if there's an increase.
But, that goes right back to the point that we were discussing earlier about the sheet of drivers. Like, what's driving it? If we have that, we don't, we don't, we don't need the presentation if we understand exactly what it is.
We should also keep in mind, if the fifty percent is going from a ten thousand dollar budget to a fifteen thousand dollar budget, you know, I appreciate hearing from the Discovery Museum, but, you know, a half hour of dialogue from them before Q and A, that's a lot of time for this board, I mean, we spend one night with the Board of Education budget. To me, it's insane that we are spending half an evening. I mean, take out Pequot Library, which we discussed in the library, and a couple of the other big ones, and, you know, we've got a dozen departments that equal two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the nonprofit. I'm happy to have Jared explain those to us. You and the First Selectwoman, you know, internally have had to sign off on those things. If you wanna provide information or explain the changes, you know, I'm good with that for a five thousand or ten thousand dollar change. So, I, and maybe periodically, you know, they come in, but we are putting all of this in the budget process. So, I think that's where I struggle with, you know, trying to find the balance between spending our time where it's really valuable and spending our time on the larger departments and, you know, the things that really move the needle for this budget and for the taxpayer, that's.
No, I agree, Ms. Leclerc?
It's something we don't need to actually discuss with them, they could put that in.
You gotta get it like near your mouth, you gotta pull it like right, until your tongue hits it, you're not close enough.
It's something that we don't actually have to discuss with them, they can easily put that in a budget message to us, along with a summary of their current budget, so we can clearly see what percentage of the budget we're providing to them. If it's two percent, it's fifty percent, that's also helpful for us to know.
I think a solid budget narrative and a description of drivers gets us like eighty percent of the way there, I really do. I personally, and questions in advance, right? I don't need to see any of the not-for-profits. I mean, listen, if the numbers, especially if they don't change, right? And, again, you know, I think the decisions, even though most of them will say, "Oh, I wanna do this," I mean, the decision is made in the First Selectwoman's office and I'm perfectly fine with the CFO giving us the reason that we gave somebody an extra five hundred bucks, right?
Yep. The other one that I thought was a good idea, oh, the Mark Barnhart one. So, yes, so that budget discussion over the last fifteen or twenty years has turned into our only opportunity, unless Mark comes to us on a specific thing. So, I think, well, your idea is a great idea. Like, I'd like to hear from Mark and have an open question, ask him, "What's going on with the X side property?" Like, are there any leads here, are there, whatever that item is? And I think February would be the perfect meeting, if we can get him in every February, before the whole process starts. Then, we just have to talk to Mark about his numbers, which really don't change, he's got like three people in his department. We might not even need to hear from him.
I think there's some merit with creating a list of departments that we'd like to hear from on a, once a year, every six months. Off the top of my head, you know, Economic Development, WPCA. You know, we hear from Department of Public Works a lot, just because they're up here a lot, so I don't know if you know if we need that so much. But, you know, I don't need to hear from Shellfish, ever, you know, I mean, and frankly, and frankly, the budget, sorry, sorry, Shellfish. I, there's gonna be like three people out in the parking lot ready to mug me tonight. I had to, I hope the police department's listening too. I also don't know why we really need to see any departments where their budget is unchanged. Zero percent increases with a solid budget narrative and a list of drivers, which there probably wouldn't be any, because it's a zero percent increase. Why we would ever wanna, and again, Shellfish is a great example, I mean, we give them this money every year and it never changes, right?
Yeah, I think, sorry to jump, but I think we've always created the budget schedule before the budget book was available. So, you know, a lot of times, we just schedule all these departments, but we don't know if there's no change, you know? So, they end up being on the schedule and we end up with all these meetings, because we have to fit them all in, so there's some. So, I hear you on that, and we can, you know, part of it, again, assuming the whole process doesn't change with the Charter, you know, part of it may be setting out some meeting dates, but maybe having a little bit more time to determine, you know, recognizing, we have to schedule people. But, you know, there's some, there's some really important meetings, insurance, pension, you know, like that kinda stuff. Those are critical meetings that take time, that we need to spend time on, Board of Education, the bigger departments. And, you know, those are a given, and these others, maybe it's dependent on where their budgets fall. So, if we combine that with, there's two other things, one, perhaps, hearing from the departments at other times during the year. And I don't know who said this before about the library, but that was another one, hours on the library. Same questions every year, "Talk to us about your materials budget, part-time versus full." You know, those questions that come up every year, that's a perfect candidate to put some time into that, into the budget message. Because that, there's ones like that, that they're bigger, we do spend time on them, same questions every year, predictable questions every year. And I think that could, you know, it doesn't mean we won't see him, but I think a lot of it can be laid out in a way that is really helpful.
So, here's a crazy thought, if we did, if we, let's just say eight meetings, if that's the right number. We figure out eight nights, what do we really care who talks to us on what night? We can let Mr., well, our clerk, right, arrange the nights and, again, go down the list and say, "No increase here, no increase here, no increase here." I mean, we'd probably dedicate one night to the Board of Ed, I mean, that night's never gonna go away, let's be real, right? Nor do we want it to, but, for any other night, what, do we really care who we're hearing? And I mean, and I'll take out the equation, like, Fire and Police, we're always gonna hear Fire and Police, right? But, they're always on the same night. So, I mean, if the first two nights are open budget hearings for anything other than Board of Ed and Fire and Police and, you know, DPW, the big drivers, do we really care about that?
Well, my other idea, I just thought about it, it doesn't make sense for us to get together, once we have the budget in hand, and all sit down, soon after having it, go through what departments haven't changed, you could see if the staff levels changed, like, they lost a person, but they're still spending the money? Well, what are you doing with that money? Why isn't there savings in your department, like, and then just come up with a schedule ourselves? When we have the actual document of what this is gonna be. Because you still have the time where the Board of Selectmen still has to go through this. Yeah. This way, we plan our budget days, but in filling them in, we get the budget book first, and then we figure out what we wanna do.
If we get it in time, I think that's.
We have a meeting, hopefully it would only take an hour and a half, you know, whatever, but at least.
I think that's a great idea.
At least try it. Because we might be able to cut enough out where we use like, it's same number of days, or maybe it's one less, cutting out the First Selectmen's thing, except for the questions. Madam Chair, can I just comment on that?
Please, or?
I think that, in kinda hearing the conversations, I kinda get the feeling that, like, it's, you know, the budget book is where all this information has to be held, in the sense of kinda, you know, the discussions about the departments. You know, to me, the core of the budget book is those department requests and to the detail, we can get the personnel summaries, and to the extent that we can get, you know, maybe some drivers and so on and so forth. But, I don't think that that's where, I don't think all the information has to live in that budget document also. The First Selectwoman and her administration are also working on modernizing the website, and the website may be easier to navigate. And then we can have something like nonprofit summaries and their drivers as just a separate addendum, so they're not in the main budget document. So, I think that, you know, some of the things here, I think, would qualify as being in that core document and become more doable. Other things may be more set for being as a separate addendum, you know, where people have access to it, you can look at it, but it doesn't have to live in that, in that core document.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. Mr. Curly?
This may be the third rail, I know we're talking about the number of meetings, but I was surprised that the Board of Ed budget was discussed in one night. And I know we had our follow-up opportunity as well, but that's two-thirds of the overall budget, twice the size of the town budget. Town side of the budget. I would love to see Board of Ed spread over two nights.
There's your extra meeting, Larry. There's your extra meeting, right there.
Yeah, I just would say, did we, and I'm just thinking about the last two years, did we get to, did we get to the end of that meeting and need to go longer, or was it more of an issue? I feel like we had, we devoted part of our follow-up meeting, right?
Last year's Board of Ed meeting actually finished early.
That's what I'm saying, so I feel like we didn't have a shortage of time on that.
We did not have a shortage of time, and then we followed up, much to Ms. Laborius's point, we followed up with additional questions.
Well, can I make a point, Madam Chair, along those lines, since we have Ms. Laborius here and our new superintendent? Would it be possible to get something like what we were talking about with the other department heads? I know we're gonna have a presentation, I know that there's gonna be an overview, but what I'm thinking is, here's a list of drivers beyond personnel, of why or how the budget was derived at for this coming year. And that might help us, A, prompt questions before our Board of Ed meeting, but at the same time, also understand how the budget was derived, does that make sense?
Absolutely, yeah. We have, in our budget document, we do do the budget drivers, and what I'd like to do is do a one-page summary doc for you, yeah. And then, in the detail, if you needed to go back, we do look, we do explain the change from budget to budget or budget to actuals, depending what the driver is in a given department, but yes, we do a high-level summary of the big, main drivers, and we can do that in a one-page document for you all to be.
I think that would be great.
It's a very good point. This budget narrative and budget drivers is for every department. It's not, it's not just the town side, for sure, right? But, Mr. Curly, I do understand your concern, you know, we are talking about, you know, I don't know if it's, we've figured out how to talk about two-thirds of the budget in one night, because we've done it for so long, or if we don't talk about half of it, you know, and we don't talk about half of it because of that? Or, we really do, you know, have a, you know, a real good discussion about it, you know, I don't know. But, it's a fair point.
I've always found that, in all my years, a theory, a very smart. I've always found that, in all my years, a theory, a very smart, I don't wanna reveal his or her name. They told me that the length of the discussion and debate on any item is an inverse to the value of what that costs. That we could spend three hours talking about something that's, that costs $10,000 or spend one night on a $200 million Board of Ed budget. Sometimes on the Board of Ed budget, I don't think we have as much knowledge as we should, as much knowledge as they have on their own budget. I've often wondered whether there's a business out there that could be a consultant for us to ask, have us ask better questions.
Courtney Limited, no, yeah. Okay, structure of meetings, I, this is a great debate. I think, we've got a lot of good recommendations. Physical meetings, this is kind of overlapping a little bit. I, I'll start. I'm very glad to see we're sitting the way we're sitting now. I don't like to be this far away maybe, but I did not like being jammed over in that corner. So I, I'm, I think this is a great format in this room to have our budget meetings. I, I, I watch the Board of Ed meetings, even though you guys don't think I do. And, and it always seems like this format works for you guys very well. So that's the first thing I would say. I think being in this room is, is, is always the best place to be for, I think, even for watching from the public. But it always feels like if people wanna be here, they can be here. If people don't wanna be here, they don't have to be. And I feel like it's a, it's a comfortable environment for our, our speakers as well. So if anyone else has any comments about physical meetings? Sorry, Ms. Marmion.
So we're back in person this year, which is fabulous. Are we going to ask the department heads to be here in person? Or are we giving them the option to be online?
I, I, I think that's a great point to bring up. Mr. Walsh, you wanna start?
I would like him here in person. Just like where the First Selectwoman should make her presentation in person, I think we lose something. We have Mr., Mr. Murray on tonight. Great guy, had much more knowledge. He would add more knowledge than he could have disposed of if he could have understood our questions because there are still limitations to the, to, to what it is. And since we know we're bringing in a department, maybe we bring Board of Ed in up to twice, but most of them, it's one night. I think we'd be respectful of their time, but I think during the entire budget process, they should have to be present before us so that we can have a normal discussion, as we've always had and we have found very helpful.
I, I agree that I think the department head should, should, should be here in person. A little skin in the game, you know, being here. I will say the Board of Ed is always here in person, giving these briefings, right? So I always feel like there's skin in the game there from, from, from that organization. Mr. Schmidt's always here. So yeah, I, I'm, you know, I mean, if there's extenuating circumstances, I like to think this is a backup more than a primary tool, to be perfectly honest with you. But I, I think that would be a great recommendation.
Yeah, I, listen, ultimately, it's, it's up to the First Selectwoman. She has provided the option for department heads to participate in a hybrid format if they, if they wish. Certainly communicate our preferences, but I, you know, I think that's, that's kind of where it's been. So I'll, I'll just put that caveat out there and Mr. Schmidt heard the feedback, so I trust that he will take that with him.
Sure. Can, can I just make one comment? And I don't know how this relates to the other, the other conversation about having the department heads come in separately apart from the, the budget process. I, I am a little concerned about that just because I do think there are other opportunities to talk to them and get updates from them, whether it's, you know, you, you hear about changes during, if it's a capital proposal that they're making, you know, some of, some of the big things that are going on within the departments or during the quarterly meetings when, you know, we hear updates and point out any major changes going on in any of the departments related to the budget. So, yeah, so I just, I wanted to put that out there as you guys were continuing the conversation about how department heads appear and whether or not that this conversation related to the, the previous conversation about additional meetings for department heads to appear.
The, the way I see the, the department head, I'm gonna call it the distributed department head meetings, right? I'll use Mr. Barnhart, for example. Mr. Barnhart's very rarely before us unless there's some, you know, some spending or something. To have him here once a year in front of us to give us the, the 30-minute overview of what's going on with economic development will save him hours of budget time. It'll save us hours of budget time. I think all the department heads, you know, need to just, we can make up a schedule and we can make it convenient for everybody, but we need to have some rotating schedule on the top, I don't know, five, six departments, right? That don't normally come before us, but that we really, and, and I tell you, we could rat them off probably pretty quick. The departments that don't come before us a whole lot, that we spend a whole lot of time in budget season. And the library and economic development come to my, you know, come right there, you know? I'm not thinking the police department, I'm not thinking the fire department, I'm not thinking DPW, but I am thinking about WPCA.
Yeah.
I mean, Parks and Rec is, is, is before us, there's always a lot going on in Parks and Rec and I'm not saying I, I, you know, but maybe it might be a good, maybe it'd be good to have him come and just say, here's the 50,000 view of Parks and Rec, right? Rather than saying, I need $10,000 to go rebuild the park, right? So, yeah, maybe it has benefit for all departments, right?
Well, and they just did a strategic plan or they're, they're in the midst of putting together recommendations, et cetera. So they have a lot to, they have a lot to report on.
Yeah, yeah, true. But, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Leclair.
Sorry. Parks and Rec is supposed to come to us once a year anyway to review the revolving fund and, and we haven't had that in a few years.
The other point I wanted to bring about the, the, and I don't know if this is the right place in physical meetings, but we might need a budget cop here a little bit, right? When somebody on the presenter's side said, saying, hey, I wanna talk about my strategic plan at Parks and Rec. Love to hear about it, come back, you know, June 23rd, right? Or even when we get a little bit verbose, right? So I don't know how we do that. I don't, I don't, I, I don't wanna limit the discussion because again, my, the, the goal of the budget, that, you know, the budget, you know, committee is that we have quality and we discuss these things, right? But from the department heads, if we're gonna really implement this revolving system, you know, we should, we need to lay down little, little ground rules, right?
Well, can I follow up on that? And, and I don't wanna pick on the nonprofits, but it, it just provides a good example. So I think, you know, last year we had a handful come before us and they were just the ones, you know, that had changes. And maybe none of them will come before us this year. But it, it seemed like when they came, they didn't really know what they were supposed to say. So, you know, one person in particular gave a, you know, rambling 35-minute discussion of stuff that really didn't, wasn't really relevant to our budget. So from that standpoint, and maybe to Mr. DeWitt's point, you know, maybe it's clear that the expectation for all department heads is five minutes of prepared comments or whatever the right number is, you know, and then Q and A. Your prepared comments should hit on, you know, budget drivers, significant changes, you know, whatever the list is, so that there's some consistency there. Because I, I do think, again, and, and some of the, you know, some of the presentations, they, they went on for a long time because they were actually fascinating, you know? The library, you know, Fair TV, it was interesting. But we blew through a lot of hours in meetings on stuff that we just didn't need to talk about.
Interesting, not timely.
Yeah, that, that guidance on what the expectation is and some consistency there, I think, would be helpful. And then for ourselves, I don't know about the budget cop, but just to, you know, that we be disciplined as well in making sure our questions are, are relevant to the, to the budget. And those that aren't, we can agree to take them up at another time.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chairman, you're gonna have to be that cop. I mean, and you could be a, you know, nice way, just say, I think we're getting off topic. Think we're getting off topic, or can we talk this about another time, this issue? It's very interesting, but, you know, can we just keep our comments to the budget or whatever?
Absolutely. And I, you know, I always, to Mr. DeWitt's point, I, you know, we've all gotta vote on this. I wanna make sure everybody feels like they're getting the information they, they need. So I've always tried to be, you know, more on the indulgent side in terms of making sure everyone can speak. But at the same time, I think all of us have an interest in making sure we, we are, you know, not here in the wee hours and therefore not, you know, doing the job we're, we're trying to get done, so.
Yeah, no, I'm dragging a meeting out. Is that it for physical meetings? Voting. The process of voting, when we do voting, and I know Mr. Testani brought it up and, and I think it's a valid point for even voting night. We have had agendas right after we voted and I felt like I was just not there. So I would, much to the point that Mr. Testani brought up, not co-mix budget hearings with regular business. I would not mix voting night with, let's make that the end, make it a short meeting and then, because not that it's long, but it's, you know, it's just, I, I, I feel it's, you know, I'm not sure we focus after we go through that whole process. I don't know what you, what you all think.
You were saying a separate meeting just on voting.
Yeah, we, we have a sep, in the budget, in theory, it is a separate night to do voting. We have in the past included other business afterwards. And I'm just saying that I don't think we give that, that business to a fair shake. Maybe if it's just a, you know, department head update, maybe that would be fine. But if it's a substantive vote after that, nah, I don't...
I, yeah, la, last year, no, last year, we had, we had a couple of items before because, you know, they were a couple of WPCA items and I, I figured they'd be quick and we put them on the agenda. But I hear the feedback, if we need to do that again, we'll just have to take it up in a special meeting. And I think that's fine, so.
That's it for my agenda. I want to ask in particularly two members, our two newest members, you know, what, my three questions. I'll start with Mr. Stark, cause he's, has been very quiet tonight. Your first-year budget process, what went well, what didn't go well, what would you improve?
I've been quiet for a reason because I, I don't have a strong opinion either way. Yeah, I really don't know what to say about it. I thought, I thought it's a lot of information to digest very quickly, but I think people did a good job of, of doing that. It's really a...
That's fair. Mr., I know Mr. Curly's got something for me. I know he does.
Thank you. No, I, overall, I thought the process went well. I, I thought there was healthy debate. It got spirited at times, but that's part of what government is about, right? And, you know, I, I will say, personally, I think I was most frustrated with getting the backup information in the 11th hour. And I, I've been on the other side, I've been in that spot, so I understand how hard it is to pull that information together and get it out timely because it's person hours and, and the work's gotta get done. So I'm a little bit sympathetic to that, but it does make our job a lot more difficult if we don't have the information more timely. Nothing's more frustrating than getting backup for the meeting and recognizing that it's hundreds of pages and you just don't have time to review it. So for me, that was probably the most frustrating thing. But overall, I thought the process went well. And I'm looking forward to this year. And I, and I think a lot of the changes that we discussed tonight would absolutely improve the process, so I'm excited.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll hand the gavel back to our chairwoman.
Well...
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Matola. So there's, most people on this board don't even know we have a food schedule during budget. When we're here, we bring food and there's a food schedule. And it's a responsibility of the budget chairman to make that schedule, so. The new people always bring the, you know? Yeah. So, good, good point, but that's it. Thank, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, well, um...
I do have one thing. When we actually got to the vote, we, we rushed it a little bit. Like, some of us thought that the, the collection rate assumption should be more conservative and I just thought it should revert to the, the average. And we, we ended up setting it to the recent year average. But then Mr. Walsh mentioned, you know, if you, if you do that, you've gotta remember that, you know, property transfer activity is gonna slow down and it has, right? And I thought about that after we voted on it and I was like, he's probably right. So it would be good if we pause here and there and think about, okay, if we're gonna do this, let's just take five minutes to discuss what other areas it could affect. I mean, I mean luckily, we figured out there's gonna be a lot of slack in other areas of the budget, so that particular concern may not matter this year, but it could very well matter next year. So that would be the one thing I might change. A little, take a breath, maybe even take a quick recess, something like that.
All right, well, I want to again thank Mr. DeWitt for, for his years of service on the Budget Committee and, and doing this work. He does all the scheduling, makes sure everyone's there, you know, figures out the budget to try to time, time it all in the, you know, in the, in the evenings. But this process, kind of the postmortem, we haven't done for several years and I really think it's valuable. And I hope that, you know, Frank and Jared, it was helpful for you guys, you know, anything that we can do to, to work, you know, and Courtney, you know, to, to work together more collaboratively. I, I think it's terrific. Mr. Walsh?
If we can, as we're doing it this year afterwards, if we could try, I think this has been a great meeting. It might have been one of the best postmortems I can remember, to be honest with you. But it might be helpful slightly earlier so we have more recollection on what, what, what... And I'm not blaming anybody, there, there's been, there's been lots of stuff going on. I, I understand there's been lots of stuff going on, so I totally get it. But if we can get a little closer, because as I was heading here tonight, I'm like, I don't really remember much other than I didn't enjoy it.
Yeah, I hear you.
Normally, normally the Budget Committee, which is, is only two or three of us ever, meets the month after and that I keep like a running list of what, I, I, I literally do this myself. What went well, what didn't go well, what, you know, what can we improve? I usually keep a running list and...
Things are fresh. I think it's helpful because we give the feedback to, you know, Frank earlier. You know, he was working on some of these initiatives the entire summer, as he said, on his own accord. But, you know, having had the feedback earlier, I know would have been helpful, so point taken. All right.
Thank you for everyone's comments. I appreciate the candor and...
Frank, thank you for...
Yep.
Get the...
Okay. All right. All right, Ms. Vitale?
Um, thank you. Mr. DeWitt, I just want to thank you for your work on this and just thank you to the full Board of Finance for inviting us to the table to have this discussion. It was very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you again. All right, so we are going to move on to item five, which is minutes. So if you guys wanna depart for this, all right. So item five, to hear, consider and act upon the draft minutes of September 8th, September 20th, September 26th and October 18th, 2022. Can I have a motion to hear this item? Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Curly. We did have some board members absent from a couple of these meetings, so we'll, we'll vote on them separately each set. So let's start with September 8th. Any comments or questions on these minutes? No? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes from September, the draft minutes from September 8th? Okay, Mr. Stark? Yep, Mr. Stark, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Curly, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmion, Ms. Leclair opposed. Abstentions, Mr. DeWitt and Mr. Testani. Okay, those minutes are approved, 7:02. September 20th, comments on these minutes? Anyone? Okay, I just, I have one small comment on this and it, it's in the... It's in the, on the first page of the minutes, the paragraph that, where I am referenced as, as talking about the capital planning workshop... it's in the, on the first page of the minutes, the paragraph that, where I am referenced as, as talking about the capital planning workshop. The last sentence there says, Chairwoman Charlton said it will be a change, but the process will be better in the long run. I don't actually think I said that. I, I think what I suggested was that I, I heard everyone's concern about the changes, and I encouraged everyone to give it a chance. So, I would just, I would like to make a motion to strike that last sentence out of that paragraph. Mr. Matola will second, anybody, objections? Okay, in favor of that amendment? All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. If there are no other changes, can I have a motion to, or can we, we can vote on the, on these minutes of September 20th as amended? Oh, go ahead, Mr. DeWitt.
I know I made specific comments about the fact that I was not happy that this moved, I just don't know. I, I guess removing that last sentence is, is fine, I'm just, I guess it does need to be noted that, in the agreement, so.
All right, so, all in favor of accepting the minutes of September 8th as amended? Please say aye. September 20th, I'm sorry. Craig, are you okay? Okay, it is unanimous. All right, so we will move on to the minutes of the special meeting of September 26th.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Testani?
I'd like to make a motion to, to postpone the approval of these minutes. There's a significant amount of conversation that had been left out of these minutes that transpired during this meeting. I'd like the opportunity to speak to Prue about exactly what, or add more flavor, as had been referenced in previous minute discussions with regard to what transpired, and come back perhaps at our next meeting, which I, and forgive me, I don't have the date right in front of me, for December, I guess would be our next regular meeting, because we have the quarterly, which we don't normally do minutes, right? So, our December meeting, so.
Okay, would I, okay, I, I, I have a thought, because I was actually gonna make a motion on these myself, but Mr. Walsh, you had a comment here?
No, I mean, I think I'd support Mr. Testani, because I don't want to sit here and like have a roundtable on the minutes. If he has a proposed change, it'll give us time to all, you know, whatever, maybe you can, you know, we, we, then, then sit here and go.
Maybe I, could, would, would it be okay if I just explained the, the change that I was gonna suggest? I don't know if this will help or not. So, I agree with you, Mr. Testani, and my concern when reading the minutes was that the entire substance of this meeting was approving a bid waiver, and that the minutes do not at all reflect why we approved a bid waiver. And the reason, you know, that the most important aspect of that was the fact that we had a land purchase for $400,000, and we had two appraisals that were each, you know, more than $400,000, so that was our basis. So, we had discussion about that during the meeting, but what I thought might be easiest, and I'm, I'm fine to postpone it if that's what the board would like, but let me just read the motion I was gonna make, because I was gonna suggest this language, which I thought might get to your point. When I introduced the, the item that night, I made reference to the backup, which had those appraisals. So, I was going to suggest that we insert this language. Chairwoman Charlton referenced the posted meeting backup for the bid waiver purchase price of $400,000. Page one of the additional backup includes an independent property valuation dated September 25th, 2022, for the three parcels being donated to the town in the amount of $825,000. Page 22 of the additional backup includes a copy of the assessor's valuation for all four parcels, completed in 2020 before the property was subdivided in the amount of $419,000. Now, those were my actual words in introducing this, and, you know, that introduction, I think, again, we can, we can amend the minutes to go through the back and forth, but I think that's the heart of the matter, which is, we approved a bid waiver because we had appraisals that supported a bid waiver. So, that's what I was going to suggest. So, I'm, you know, if the board would like to postpone, we can do that. If you all find that change acceptable, I would make a motion to make that change if that satisfies people.
I'll defer to Mr. Testani, made a motion.
I think that's, I think that's part of the concern I had with this, with the minutes. I just think that there was other conversations that went on during that meeting that weren't captured in the minutes, although it got to your point, which ultimately was the approval of the bid waiver, which was the whole purpose of the meeting, there were just parts to the meeting that weren't expressed in the minutes, that it's, it's hard to get into the specifics of exactly what I'd want to say. I mean, I, I understand Mr. Walsh's point, I agree. I, I just don't have the verbiage off the top of my head to be able to say, and, and I apologize for that, I probably should have written it down, where I'd want it exactly changed. I think what you just suggested is a good start, but at the same time, like, the reason why I'm saying I'd prefer to delay it is so I could review it with Prue and, and get to exactly what I think should be added. Is that fair?
Yeah. And I think, you know, we had, we had batted around the subject, this subject before, and I think, you know, what we talked about, and Mr. Walsh, you were, I know you're recusing yourself from this, but, you know, it's fine to talk to Prue, but bring your suggested wording changes to the meeting and re, so you can read them. I'd be happy to circulate mine, which, and then we can, we can vote on that next time. So, all in favor of postponing the approval of the minutes of September 26th to our next meeting, which I believe is on November 22nd? All in favor? Aye? Okay. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Okay, fine, okay, so, that, so the postponement passes.
And, Madam, just want to, Prue?
8-0-0.
Prue?
8-0-1.
Just make, that meeting, I, just as a side note with everything else, I called the vote, and there, there was a vote taken. I, I asked to call the vote, and then a vote was taken to call the vote, so don't forget to include that, please. It doesn't say it in here. It said I made a motion to approve the item. I was not approving the item, I called the vote.
Yeah, you called the question, which is different. That put an end to the debate, and we voted on it.
Correct verbiage there, Ms. Chairman, I'm so impressed.
All right, so that, so we'll move on then to the minutes of October 18th. Are there any comments on these minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the draft minutes of October 18th, 2022? Please say aye. Okay, I see all hands. Mr. DeWitt, are you? Oh, that's, October 18th? Oh, yes, okay. Opposed? Anyone abstentions? Okay, so that passes 8-0-1, October 18th. Okay, great. All right, so we'll move on to item six, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications. Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything for us?
I do. I have one point of information. There was an item that passed in the last Board of Finance meeting that went to the RTM, and there was a technical change made in the RTM. This had to do with the, and you probably remember the conversation, there was a little confusion about how much should have been appropriated in the resolution for the Riverfield and Sherman School, and there was an $8,000 difference. And so, what, what ended up happening in the Board of Finance was you guys increased the amount by $8,000. It should have been left at the, at the lower amount, without the $8,000 in there. And I, so after that meeting, and before the RTM voted, I consulted with bond counsel and asked them the, you know, the, the right procedure for making this change. They said just have, the, the intention was always there, and I, I think it was just a, that it wasn't, wasn't clear what was happening, and because there was a change originally made in the Board of Selectmen, and, and it just didn't make its way into the Board of Finance. So, so I just wanted to make that point, that there, so the, the amount that you guys approved was, is actually $8,000 left, less. And it had to do with Holland Hill. At the time, that piece for Holland Hill hadn't been approved by the Board of Education, and so that's why, that's why it shouldn't have been and couldn't have been included in there.
All right, thank you. So, the fact that we, we approved, so the Board of Selectmen, this board, and the RTM all approved the two amounts for the two roof repairs. So, that's, that's good, and they can move forward with that project. We mistakenly added into our approval the $8,000 for the Holland Hill design, which was not approved by other boards, so that's not gonna move forward in any case, so we are good, and we don't have to change anything.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
There's no, if there's no other questions, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, that's it. The only other thing I'll give an update on, and Mr. Schmidt is here as well. So, at our last meeting, one of our, I think it was Mr. Matola, asked about getting an update on Penfield Pavilion. If you recall, during that meeting, the October 18th meeting, we all voted to transfer the entire revenue surplus for the year into the remediation account, and so that prompted the question of when we would get an update on Penfield. So, Mr. Bremer said November, today's November 1st, which was a little early for him. So, what's on the table tentatively is to do this prior to the quarterly meeting. So, our quarterly meeting is on the November 22nd at 7:30, and the tentative plan is to schedule a special meeting immediately before that at 6:30 to hear the update on Penfield. So, I hope that works for everyone. And, you know, Mr. Schmidt, I don't know if you want to comment further, but everyone, you know, that meeting's not noticed yet, but if you want to just mark it in your calendars.
What's the date?
So, the same as our quarterly meeting, just starting an hour earlier? Yeah, okay. Any questions on that? Okay. All right, then, so we'll move to item seven, which is, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous, all right, thank you, everyone.